Thank you, recording. Good evening and happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Program of Personnel Committee to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to start first by welcoming everybody to our meetings this evening. Meetings, that's plural. There's two meetings tonight. For those who have not attended our committee meetings before, I want to provide a quick overview. These meetings, this first one, the Program of Personnel Committee, and the Facilities and Finance Committee, which will be immediately after, are committee meetings designed as an opportunity for the board to learn and discuss various topics in preparation for the regular board meeting that takes place later in the month. We start with the Program on Personnel Committee, which I chair, and typically follow this meeting immediately after that with the Facilities and Finance led by Chairperson Casey Rooney here to my left. As we follow the Open Meetings Act rules, both of these meetings are open to the public and provide opportunities for public comment, which we will get to shortly. However, because these committee meetings are committee meetings, the board will not and cannot take any official action or vote on any motion tonight. Regular meeting later in the month is when we have the opportunity to take any official action. These meetings, just like any board meetings, are not opportunities for open public dialogue. These are official meetings held in the public and provide time on the agenda for members of the public to comment during the public comment period. All other discussion takes place between the board members and the district administration on the stage. The agenda tonight, we did the pledge. We will have public comments shortly. We will go through COVID-19 metrics and testing update. We will review and discuss the culture of care COVID-19 response plan. We will look at the Board Document Management software, an online platform for superintendent evaluation. We have a number of personnel items to review and a series of board policies to look over for second reading prior to voting on in later in the month. We'll do a brief review of the January committee summary and discuss any future agenda items. So we will start now under the public comment period. First, I want to say by saying we appreciate any and all public comments we receive at our meetings and encourage people to participate in this opportunity anytime you have feedback you would like to provide to this board. We ask that anyone wishing to address a board, please sign in. If you have not done so, we have some of the names up here already, and you will be recognized and come to the podium as you're recognized to address the board. When addressing the board, we'd like you to state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes per person. You'll hear an alert at that time, or you'll notice a timer, and we'll ask you to end your comments so that others may be heard. We want to hear as many people as we possibly can. We'd like to provide this opportunity for as many people to speak, so therefore, we're extending our public comment period to a maximum of 120 minutes. We rarely go over our normal 30-minute minimum set by board policy, but we feel it's appropriate to extend this limit tonight while still providing time for the board to discuss items on the agenda, some of which will be of interest to all of you. In addition, we'll be calling people in the order that you signed in, rotating individuals from each stakeholder group. So we'll have an opportunity to hear from each stakeholder group, the parents, the students, that type of thing. We will also prioritize the in-person comments. So those of you who came tonight, and if we have time before the 120-minute limit, we will have all emails, any and all email comments read into the record. We can now, however, assure you that every board member has the opportunity to read all email comments submitted, so we make that commitment to you. You should also note that we do not respond to any comments or questions during the public comment period, nor will we engage in any discussion with any individual that chooses to speak during this public comment period. This is our normal protocol, nothing to worry. And any response to any specific questions or requests will be provided by either the board and/or the district administration within a reasonable timeframe after the meeting concludes. Lastly, it goes without saying that everyone at attendance is expected to conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others as outlined in our board policies. So with that, we will commence with the invitation for public comment.
This evening, to make it very smooth, we'll be calling up the first speaker and then saying who the second and third are, so they can stand behind the podium, so they're ready to go and keep the speakers moving along as quickly as possible. So I'd like to start with John Hassert, who's speaking as a parent. After him will be Callie Hill, who's speaking as a student. And following that will be Anna Dre, who's speaking as a community member. And then I will let you know who's after Anna, excuse me, Anna, as we progress through the list.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. My name is John Hassert. I have a daughter here at Libertyville High School, and my youngest daughter is in at Butterfield. I'm here to recommend that you guys eliminate the mandatory mask policy, preferably tonight. But at this point, there is no, there's no reason to continue it. The only reason to have a policy like this is if, or to continue to have a policy is if the metrics in the state of Illinois are different or better than corresponding states or countries around the world, and that's just not the case. So if you cannot provide data, cannot provide actual benefits to why you're doing what you're doing, or why we have this policy, there's really no reason to continue it. So yeah, I'm just going to leave it at that. There's a lot of people here that can provide a lot more data for you. But like I said, what I'm asking for, what I've been asking for for a long, long time is actual benefits to the policies that you're implementing. Don't just tell us there's benefits. Provide data that supports the benefits, and then compare those to the costs. There's been a lot of costs associated with what has been done for the last two years. No one wants to talk about that. We need to talk about that. You guys need to evaluate what it is, evaluate what those costs are relative to the benefits. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Callie Hill, and I'm a freshman here at LHS. I also have a brother, Hunter, who is a sophomore, and an older sister who graduated in 2020. My grandparents are graduates and high school sweethearts from Libertyville High School. I have six aunts and uncles and three cousins who have all graduated from Libertyville. I'm one of many students who have participated in my right to protest against the mask mandate and how wrong our district has gotten the ruling on February 4th. We want to be free of masks. We want to see each other's faces. Many have spent the last two years of our high school careers behind masks. Many of us have spent our entire high school career behind masks. We want to see our classmates smile. We want to see the awe in our teammates' faces when we sink the game-winning shot. We want to see the excitement and hear the laughter between friends at the dance. It is a crucial part of our learning to be able to read emotions on our faces. We have been unable to do this. We are done being forced to be hidden behind a mask. For two years, we have walked these hallways and sat in classrooms emotionless. This is not the high school experience we have dreamed or want any longer. We, as students, have given up so much in these last two years: graduations, proms, field trips, sports, just to name a few. But is this really about our health anymore? Other schools have continued to have all these events and in-person learning with no masks or mandates. Stop hiding behind the phrase. The masking has allowed Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School to remain open and in-person learning in extracurriculars. It no longer applies. If it is truly about our health, you would also be considering our mental health. Depression, suicide, and substance abuse have all risen in teens over the last two years in a direct correlation from quarantines, mandates, and masks. Our emotional and social health is damaged. Over 500 districts within the state have changed their position and made masks optional. Ours has not. Is not even important enough to schedule a meeting. Isn't your job to serve the students and families of this committee? If not, who are you serving? You've sat in silence for the last week and is unacceptable. I ask our school board that we have elected in our administration to reconsider the position as soon as possible. Wait until February 20th, it's unacceptable. For many of us, time is running out of our high school career. Do what is right and take action now. Give those who are comfortable, ready, and ready the ability to smile once again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I want to remind everybody to please continue to wear your face covering when you come to the podium. Thank you.
And I also want to remind the next speaker so they can be prepared after we hear from Ms. Dre. Dale Sherman, who's speaking as a parent, followed by Emily Bissing, who's speaking as a student, followed by Marnie Messero, excuse me, speaking as a parent.
Good evening, board. I'm Anna Dre. I think you all know me. I came here tonight to thank you for your leadership. I appreciate how you've always incorporated the voices of all parents, community members, not just the loudest voices. As Evan, I appreciate how your dedication to this community, as evidenced by your being here on Valentine's night. I'm sure there's other places you'd rather be tonight, listening to hours of comments at a meeting where if a member had bothered to educate themselves, they would know you legally can't vote tonight. So thank you for being here. I know it's a treat for you to have community engagement like this. Far too often, you're left to make decisions without any input as nobody bothers to show up at the meetings. Here's hoping this interest stays active when important topics like budgets come up for discussion later on. I also came tonight to apologize to you. I've been watching what's going on in the community, and it's not right. You're neighbors. You've answered the call to service, and you have been vilified and name-called by extremists in this community. And it's not right, and I'm sorry that's happening to you. I also wanted to tell y'all, I went and got a haircut on Monday after the student protest. And one of the children who had decided not to be educated that day got her hair cut before I did. And the woman cutting her hair asked her, "Honey, why'd you do it?" And her answer was, "Well, all my friends were in there." Think about this, what's going on here? And who's pushing this agenda? It's interesting to note that in all of the parent-generated noise, other than a small group of students, the students are happy to be back in school getting an in-quality, a high-quality in-person education. And that is due in no small part to your leadership and your efforts, to which I say, "Job well done."
Good evening. My name is Dale Sherman. I am a parent and a taxpayer. You got it wrong. And the process you took to getting it wrong, you got wrong. You're human beings. Certainly, all of us make mistakes. It's not too late to undo this mistake, but owning up to the mistake is where it begins. So how the process was wrong? Transparency is the cornerstone of trust. If you want this community to trust you, you've got to be transparent. You're also legally obligated to be transparent sitting in your seats. So how a decision of this import was made without transparency is just shocking. Was there a vote? If there was a vote, why wasn't it done out in the open? If there wasn't a vote, who's running the show? Is the board running the show on this topic? Or is its employee running the show on this topic? When there will be a vote, please let us know. Assuming one hasn't happened, we'll all be there. We'll be there for the vote, and we encourage you to vote to reverse course. It's not too late to reverse course. Why is the course wrong? You're not following the law. The email that was put out about we're supporting the most narrow path. That means you're taking the path that exposes you to the most liability, exposes you to the most lawsuits, and there's a massive joint that's going to take place here and creates the most exposure for the board and for the community. We'd much rather see that money go into teachers and spending there. Much rather see that money going into resources for the students. Let's not pay lawyers, right? Let's pay our teachers and pay for our students' resources. That's where it should all go. The ruling was very clear from the downstate judge, Judge Grishaw. That judge stated the law very clearly and found the governor's order, Executive Order 18, to be invalid and unenforceable, and the emergency rules promulgated by ISBE and IS, Illinois Department of Health, to be invalid, the joint guidance to be invalid. So all the bases on which you claim to have for this policy for the last, I don't know, not the last two years, but the last period that the schools have been open, it's all blown up. So on what are you possibly basing the policy that you have now? 520-plus districts around the state, that's 2/3 or better, have all gone mask optional in response to this ruling. It's clear as day what the law is. D-70 went mask optional. They're a feeder district. Oak Grove went mask optional. Carmel was mask optional. The appellate court didn't save you with a stay. The appellate court's not going to save you with their ruling. And by the way, let's face it, Pritzker wants to lose. He wants to lose that because it's the best outcome for him. He can say he fought for his chief constituency and then say it's those darn courts, the other ones who are letting these kids go mask-free. Perish the thought. So it's not too late to reverse course, and we encourage you to please do so and do so in an open and public and transparent way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Bissing, and I'm a sophomore here at LHS.
Can you please put your mask back on, please? Yes, no, even when you're talking, please. Thank you. Please, no outbursts from the audience so that we can hear the speaker. Thank you.
We will add time.
As many of us high schoolers know, our high school years have been cut short due to COVID. My freshman year was boring as boring could be. My sophomore year, however, has been a little bit better from going to homecoming and sporting events, but all I want to do is to go back to school maskless. We have been dealing with masks for over two years, and I think I speak for many of the students here at LHS and Vernon Hills. Thank you, Dr. Colentes, and our administrators for always being supportive. I'm here to fight for our civil rights on behalf of the students of D-128 for going mask optional. A group of 30 to 40 people, including myself, have joined together every day for the past week, standing outside of LHS, getting let in the auditorium to talk with Dr. K. He has done a great job of communicating with us and letting us into two classrooms without masks and no social distancing. None of us have COVID symptoms, and we are still healthy. Masks do not prevent the spread of COVID, for COVID will always be around, and everyone will get it at some point in another in their life. It just goes to show that we should have an option to either be maskless, or if they choose to wear masks during school. If people choose to wear masks during school, the people that are maskless will not bully or harass them at all. That is their opinion, and no one will judge them. Many people want to do this protest, but they're scared that their friends and teachers will be upset with them. I've gotten many texts, calls, Snapchats, saying that they want to do this, but they're scared. During this week, I've lost many friends due to this because they think it's what side I'm on, which I repeatedly said that it's not about that. It's about my civil rights. My friends have not spoken to me since last week before all this happened. During this, my mental health has rapidly declined because all week I've been in one classroom, no teacher, and not actually getting taught. As much as I love all the people in the classroom this class week, I needed to go to class to see all my friends. But I thought it was important to stand up for what I believe is right. I hope you guys make the right decision, as in you guys are representing us in all your decisions. Thank you.
Following this parent will be student Kylie Christensen, and then parent Erin Khan.
Good evening, board. My name is Marnie Navarro. I am a proud lifelong resident of Libertyville, a graduate of District 70 and District 128. I took my top-notch education and became an attorney and specifically a litigator. Thank you for the forum for public comment here this evening. I come here to you to give you a different perspective, both as a constituent and taxpayer, but as an attorney. And I want to share with you my deep concerns from a legal perspective about the decisions the board has made and continues to make on a daily basis. Picketing on my fellow parent Dale Sherman, a fellow attorney's comments, the legal basis and foundation upon which District 128 is unwisely, sticking to this masking mandate, is predicated upon a foundation that has been held null and void. Specifically, the court, in a 29-page detailed reasoning, found, Judge Grishaw found, that the basis upon which it was predicated is null and void, that Pritzker used the executive branch to legislate in violation of separation of powers doctrine. This is made more egregious by the fact that District 28 was a named defendant in that lawsuit. Notwithstanding this, District 128 has doubled down on stupid and continues to violate the due process rights of all of our students, knowing that they are bound by this order, and continuing to violate not just the due process rights of the students who are being segregated and disciplined as this brave young student just spoke to momentarily before me. It also exposes this district to more certain liability. I and others have propounded FOIA requests against this board. And once I get those documents, I can assure you that there will be legal challenges to the bonds behind this school board. Our bonds, the district's bonds will be unduly implicated and imperiled, and each of you board members jeopardizes your tort immunity and risks personal liability. You are needlessly and senselessly wasting our taxpayer dollars and jeopardizing our district. As you've heard, more than 530 districts of 879 statewide have gone mask optional. That's over 60%. You're on the wrong side here. It is nonsensical, given Pritzker lifting the statewide mask mandate to persist in this course of action, but it is not too late. Please, you are not listening to the judiciary. You are not listening to your constituents, many of whom who are here tonight. To whom are you listening? I beg of you that you act now before you make a bad situation worse, that you promptly call a special meeting where you are able to vote and make masks optional at District 128 before the lawyers and the courts, myself included, make you. Thank you.
Kylie Christensen?
Hi. Hi, I'm Kylie Christensen. I'm a freshman at LHS. From a personal standpoint, I would like to say being masked has made a big impact on my learning ability. Ever since I was younger, I've struggled with learning things at a normal pace. I would have to learn things a lot slower and have to get help from multiple teachers just to learn one subject. Being masked has mainly impacted me because I'm a lip reader and mainly read people's lips to understand and help interpret things. Sorry. Being masked was already hard enough, but now since I want to voice my opinion, not only am I far behind, but I have to teach myself, which is a lot harder. I would also like to state that during this time protesting, I would never say anything rude or out of place to anyone. I think everyone should have their own opinions, and everyone should voice theirs, but instead, we are at war with each other trying to prove what is right and what is wrong. During this time, parents and kids have decided to harass and bully people online because of their opinions, which is not right and should not be allowed.
We have parent Erin Khan, followed by student Nikki Burzak, followed by parent Jennifer Gifford.
Good evening, board. My name is Erin Khan. I'm a lifelong Libertyville resident and a proud graduate of Libertyville High School. I am a taxpayer, a parent, and a concerned resident. My husband is also a graduate of Libertyville High School and also a local attorney. I would like to discuss the issues at hand from my professional perspective. I have been a local Realtor for 16 years. I worked through the housing boom, the housing crisis, and every market in between. I'm on the front lines of Illinois's mass exodus, and it was never more apparent to me than in 2020. Between July 2020 and July 2021, more than 122,000 people moved from our state. That's the entire population of Springfield. It marks the largest exodus from Illinois in our state's history. The people are voting with their feet. In March of 2020, COVID arrived. While everyone else, including the teachers, retreated to the safety of their homes, I was considered essential, and I continued to work. I had to wear a mask before it was mandated, gloves, sign COVID-19 disclosures to enter properties, carry hand sanitizer and bleach wipes to every showing that went on. By April of 2020, I had a number of listings coming on the market right here in Libertyville. And for the first time in my career, every single one of my sellers left the state. At this time, our children were receiving a subpar education online, and employers were telling their workforce that they would be home indefinitely. Libertyville's real estate market has always been somewhat insulated from the real estate pitfalls, and I credit this mostly to our educational system. People want to live in our district, and it keeps our property values high. It's proving not to be enough. Oppressive mandates have been placed on everyone and have crushed our small business owners. I'm on the Board of Directors for Main Street Libertyville. I know how badly our small business owners are suffering, and they're the backbone of this community. The decisions of this board and finance committee have real-life impact on every taxpayer. District 128 has now made national headlines for segregating students, denying them their education, their rights to due process while participating in intimidation tactics. And if that weren't bad enough, you've now made major financial decisions without complying with the Open Meetings Act. You have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. You work for us. You answer to us. Your personal opinions are irrelevant. This is the job you took. You work for the people. You listen to your constituents. You uphold the law. You don't vote for whether or not you're going to uphold the law. That's not up for a vote. You answer to the parents and you answer to the taxpayers. You are public servants. And the people are speaking. Do you hear us? Are you listening? How loud do we have to be until you hear what we are telling you? Our town is in peril. 2/3 of our property taxes go to these schools, and you're failing us.
Please wrap up your comments.
Stop dragging this district's prestigious name through the mud. Stop aligning yourselves with division. The solution is actually quite simple. Stop mandating people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicola Bursach, and I'm a sophomore at Libertyville High School. First, I'd like to thank Dr. K, along with all the staff at LHS that have helped my peers and I continue our academic journey this past week. I'd also like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Gay for being more than generous and going out of their way for supporting all of us and all of our parents who have defended and stood up for us along with many hate brought by other parents and students. I feel that District 128 should be mask optional. Over the past two years of COVID, masks have not proven to stop the spread of COVID-19. As a community, it is time to learn that the virus is here to stay, and we need to learn to move forward. COVID-19 is around 0% danger for students my age, and for students with high risk of the virus, they are able to get the COVID-19 vaccine if they haven't already. Getting vaccinated is a choice, just like wearing a mask should be. In America, we have freedoms and are able to make choices for ourselves. We are all lucky to not be living in a country where the government controls every move of the people. My dad lived in a communist country and was able to come to America for freedom and to give his kids a good life. Now look at what this country and community has gone to, not being able to even have a choice to wear a piece of cloth or not. With all that said, I know that I can speak for myself along with many other students and parents who feel that it is time to move on and continue to live our lives without being scared of a virus. It is time to give back our freedom, and it is time to make masks at District 128 optional. Thank you.
We have parents Jennifer Gifford, followed by student Sarah Sterner, followed by parent Kim Bissing.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Gifford. I'm a previous District 70 teacher, a parent of four, two of whom are still in the local schools, and a 25-year taxpaying village resident. The population has finally realized- The population is finally realizing that many of the precautions taken two years ago proved to be unnecessary. It was reasonable in March of 2020 to pause and be cautious as no one fully understood with what exactly we were dealing. However, it has been known for a long time now that thankfully, children are not only at extremely low risk from COVID, but they are also not major vectors in spreading it. We're also at a point where everyone who is interested has had the opportunity to be vaccinated, and they may continue to wear a mask if they so choose. It's time to lift this requirement. For as frustrating as it has been these last couple of years, I understood that due to our governor's directions and threats, you are all in a difficult position. But this past week finally gave you a chance, an open door to say enough and allow your parents to be given their rights back. I cannot believe that not only did you not take this opportunity to lead and set an example, but you doubled down. While numerous other districts chose to lead the way, be courageous, or I might even add daring, you chose to cower. My husband and I intentionally picked this community as a place we wanted to grow roots and raise our children. And a big reason for that was the excellence of the schools. When I hear from my empty nester, longtime Liberty resident neighbors, they are shocked with the state of our schools. Just further validation that things have definitely shifted through the years. I'm upset with how poorly this past week was handled. Actually, I'm embarrassed. I'm suggesting that you, I'm suggesting that you reconsider your position and allow us as parents to choose what is best for our kids. Something I would encourage you to consider is a statement I once read by a great institution. We think creatively, explore options, and are guided by evidence and reason. And for those who don't recognize it, that's one of our missions as a district. It's time we change our actions or stop claiming to be something that we're not. Thank you.
Student Sarah Sterner.
Hello. My name is Sarah Stern, and I'm a senior at Libertyville High School. We have been in this for soon to be two years, and every student at our school has complied with the mandate for long enough to flatten the curve. COVID-19 is an endemic virus and will continue to stay with us for the rest of our lives. Being a student and wearing my mask all day is hard. When my mask is on, my glasses get fogged, making it hard to see what the teacher is presenting. It's also frustrating to wear my mask in gym class, especially when I become sweaty. This leads to bacteria building on my face. According to Town Hall, a group of parents conducted a study. They found that throughout the day, their child's face mask became contaminated with harmful bacteria. Their children's health was being harmed by wearing masks. Teenagers have a ninety-nine point nine percent chance of survival if they contact this virus. This being said, many of us are okay with not wearing our masks. If one is worried about contacting the, contracting the virus and then transmitting it to someone else, they may wear one. Wearing one versus not wearing one is the value of freedom that we should have. Another reason, this one being more personal, is that children in the developmental stage of language, speech, and social cues need to see faces to learn. I take part in the preschool program here and understand the importance of children seeing faces. Dr. Lisa Scott explains it best. Faces are arguably the most important social stimulus for humans and likely the most effective tool for promoting and supporting infant learning. Just like books are education tools used to promote language development and reading, faces are also educational tools during early development. Needing to see teachers' faces does not go away when you get older. Others and I need to see our teachers' faces in order to understand what they are trying to enunciate and say. One time this year, I asked my teacher a question. He said, "If only you could see the face I'm making under my mask, then you might be able to figure out what I am hinting at." For these reasons mentioned, I ask you to consider voting to make masks going optional. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kim Bissing, and my daughter is a sophomore at, at Libertyville High School. I want to thank the board for your dedication and hard work. I know this is a volunteer position and requires an incredible amount of your personal time. I'm not going to talk about the science of COVID and how, since last August, thousands of school districts across the country have been successful in, in masking optional for their students and faculty. I'm also not going to talk about masks and why we should have an option like five hundred and sixty and counting other districts in Illinois have decided in the last week. What I am going to talk about is how the board's recent decision to continue to make masks required has created a huge divide in our community and among our children. With Judge Grishaw's decision, you had the ability to take an off-ramp from this highway to nowhere we have been on. You could have done what so many other neighboring districts have done and decide to go mask optional. Instead, you decided to stay the course down the lonely, dark road towards nowhere. For our children this week who have decided to remain maskless, there has been limited teacher instruction. They have had their pictures plastered on social media called future criminals and even murderers. My daughter's friends have stopped talking to her because they don't know what to say, don't agree with her, or maybe both. When people say you are fighting against wearing a mask, nope, that isn't it. I made sure to educate everyone I talked to about this, including my daughter. This is about the Fifth Amendment right of due process and how the legislative judicial and executive branches work. The mandate or executive order, order you are following does not follow due process and a judge has agreed. You may be waiting on any decision the appellate court makes this week, but regardless, this is going to go to the Illinois Supreme Court. Two weekends ago, you could have spent time discussing the mitigations that have already been put in place for our district, reviewing and updating the culture of care plan and communicating a path forward. Instead, with a small percentage of other school districts, you engaged with legal teams and filed an appeal to the judge's order, fighting the judge's ruling. As a board member, it is your responsibility to listen to your constituents and make recommendations on their behalf, not your own personal beliefs. I challenge you to be daring. Put our children and their emotional wellness first and immediately develop a path forward for our children and community.
Next up, we have student Caleb Chris Christians, excuse me. It's handwritten, it's hard to read. Then after Caleb, we have parent Mara Sears. And after Ms. Sears, we have student Caitlin Jones.
Hello, I'm Caleb Christiansen, a junior at Libertyville High School. I am speaking today because I believe that District 128 should become mask optional. We will never be able to run away from COVID. This all started in the year 2019, my freshman year, second semester. I haven't had a normal year of high school yet without masks, and I am a junior already. COVID has now turned into symptoms similar to a common cold as it was weakened from multiple variants. Just the people who are at high risk or simply just want to wear masks should have the right to wear one. Masks have been proven to only protect the person wearing it, not the people surrounding them. You guys also didn't call for an emergency board meeting, even though our schools across the news. When is it appropriate to call for an emergency board meeting? We're being spoken about across the nation, but our own board that is supposed to represent our community didn't even speak on this topic before today. Also, always are, even though we have been completely respectful for our protests, we've continued to be bullied and harassed by our fellow classmates and even adults on Facebook and like other social media networks. Douglas Head started a petition for optional masks at District 128 in that, in, in that over a thousand people have signed it. The school blocked the petition from being able to access on the school wifi for a short period of time. The school board was voted on from the community, so why shouldn't you, so shouldn't you guys listen to the community when there are over a thousand people that want optional masks? Then you, Lisa Hassel, signed your name and commented on a petition of no optional masks at LHS, saying, "Thank you for taking the time to make your voices heard." The district welcomes and continues to receive input regarding this issue. We'll take, and we'll take into consideration that the input as we make any adjustments to our plan. When I saw it, it was at twenty signs or maybe even less when you signed it. You also have to sign your name to comment. She must have signed it. You taking the input from a petition with twenty signs just shows how you are pro-mask, and I hope that one day we will get someone that represents different parts of the community, community and not just one part of it. Also, as president, shouldn't you, aren't you supposed to remain unbiased in being in the board? And I think you should be the one enforcing it the most when you are the president. There are also sporting events like the hockey games where there is a full set of fans without masks. Many people who are against this process were seen without a mask at variety, variety of games, hockey games. Even though we're in school and all throughout the news, I still want to say thank you to all the teachers that helped and gave up their time to stay in the rooms with us as we worked. With or without masks, without a mandatory mask mandate, people will still bring COVID into the school. We need to get back to normalcy. COVID is here to stay. Making mask mandatory in our school isn't going to change anything when anyone can go no mask in any indoor places. Thank you.
Hi there. My handwriting might not have been the best, but it's Mark Sears.
Thank you, Mark. I apologize.
I'm speaking as a parent, a former graduate, but most importantly, a teacher. The largest high school district in this state, District 214, has gone mask optional. We've had zero issues whatsoever. I estimate about seventy percent of our students are still masked. That is their choice. Thirty percent are not. With thirteen thousand students in our district, thirty percent decided for themselves that masks are not needed. Get your act together. Vote this thing down.
My name is Caitlin Jones, and I'm a freshman at Libertyville High School and one of the many students exercising my right to protest. For two years, we have lived in a, in constant fear of a coronavirus. Everywhere we turn, there are people telling us that if we don't follow these outlandish rules exactly, then we are going to kill ourselves and everyone around us. For two years, I have tried to follow the rules, thinking maybe I will finally be able to move on with my life. But now I realize that I have to stand up for myself and let you know that these masks are not helping anyone. They are doing more harm than good. I find it near impossible to breathe while having my mask on. Wearing a mask for almost eight hours a day is not healthy or sanitary. We should be entertaining our masks almost every hour, but how many people actually do that? We are breathing in the same germs all day, and it's disgusting. I love to play the flute. I've been in band since fourth grade, and I'm in the symphonic band here at the school. However, when Corona came and everyone got locked up, bands only became a chore. Zoom band is awful, and I was glad when my family came to LHS and I was at least be able to be in person. But playing in a mask is exhausting. I cannot get enough air and I begin to feel lightheaded and dizzy. It is painful to play my instrument with my mask on. Not to mention that the playing masks do absolutely nothing to protect us from anything. There are massive holes in the side and in the middle of them, which will not let anything in. We live in America. We have the right, we have certain rights and freedoms that we should be able to, we should have the freedom to choose what we want to do with our life. If we don't, if we don't wear a mask, it is not going to suddenly make everybody else's masks useless. It has been proven that the forced separation and isolation of people has increased mental problems among children and teens. Many teenagers are certainly, are naturally social people, and the many COVID measurements have isolated them, increasing feelings of depression and loneliness. An increase in suicide and mental health problems among teens has coincided with the pandemic. Personally, I'm not a social person, but I, even I have felt the strain of distance from other people. People are divided, pushed apart by differences. Where differing views may have once been celebrated or at least accepted, there is now a fear that if you let someone else know how you think or feel, you will be rejected and ridiculed. People are scared to speak out for fear of what might happen to them, and that is not okay. We should be able to decide for ourselves whether or not we want to wear a mask. It should be my choice, not someone else's.
Next up, we have parent Amy Franz.
Followed by student Keegan Jones, followed by parent Kristen Griffith.
Good evening, Board members, administrators, teachers, students, and community members. My name is Amy Franz, and I have three children. My two sons graduated during the pandemic years of 2020 and 2021, and I have a daughter Lily who is a freshman. Some of you know me, but for those of you who do not, I come to you with a variety of perspectives. I am a two-term Board of Education member from Oak Grove District 68. I'm a third grade teacher in a neighboring district, a parent, and a graduate of this high school. I understand from a personal perspective how difficult it is to make decisions as a Board of Education member, especially in a pandemic. At Oak Grove, we chose to prioritize planning, using specific data points to support our plan with consistent, transparent communication, always keeping our staff and our students in the forefront of every decision that we made. I am disappointed to say that I have not seen this happen in this district for the last two years. I could spend all of my time talking about the devastating effects that this has had on my own children, on my students, and on many others, but that is in the past. Now we have an opportunity to act in the future in a different way, one that involves planning and not waiting on others, the governor, the lawyers, the other school districts, to make our decisions. We all know that these mandates and the pandemic are going to end soon, and we need to be prepared. We currently have two big problems, as I see it. We have a court case that we are a named defendant in with a court ruling that has told you that the governor mandating certain pandemic mitigations is not legal and requires due process to enforce. It is your obligation to, to mitigate risk for this district and to follow the law. Second, the district continues to place students, including my daughter, into a disciplinary process that they were not given due process for. I acknowledge this is not easy, and I acknowledge as a teacher, there's still a lot of fear. I am sympathetic, and I know this is one of the hardest years yet we've had in the pandemic. This is why we need strong leadership and a clear plan. We need to adjust the culture of care plan. This plan was created in August when we were trying to help all students adjust to returning to in-person learning. It is now mid-February, and the pandemic is winding down, and we need to be prepared. We need to have our own guidance for what continues to require mitigations. How do we on and off ramp those? What data are we going to use to make those decisions? In the meantime, we also need a process for how you're going to handle these students who are choosing to protest. We need to give them due process, and we need to provide them their legal right to have an education from their teachers and be with their peers.
We need you, we need you, Board members, to bring this community back together with a clear plan. Please consider holding an emergency meeting and making some decisions. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Board. My name is Keegan Jones, and I'm a junior here at LHS. In case you can't tell, I'm very nervous and not, I'm not one for public speaking. However, despite my nervousness, I feel that sharing my perspective is more important than staying silent. In March of 2020, just before the shutdown of COVID, I received my Eagle Scout Award. For those who are unfamiliar with the Boy Scout program, the Eagle Scout Award is the highest rank you can earn after years of hard work, along with an extensive service project that takes a minimum of sixty hours to complete. Needless to say, it was a lot of work. For my project, working with the Village of Green Oaks, I organized volunteers and supplies and worked to paint around forty fire hydrants for my neighborhood. It was inspiring to see people come together to work hard for many hours to get something done that didn't directly benefit them, but it was providing a needed service for the community. So why is this relevant? Unfortunately, over the past two years, I've seen people drift apart. It may not have been instant, but over time, people don't talk to each other. They don't leave their homes. They wear masks alone in their car, some even wear them while walking outside alone. People are hesitant to come together and work to serve the community. And unfortunately, our, our diverse community has been divided by anger and hatred and by those unwilling to find common ground. I have only one working ear, therefore, sorry. Therefore, it's a lot harder for me to hear, and it's also a lot harder for me to see facial cues. I'm not the only one with problems, though. A passage from mind.org.uk says, and I quote, "You might feel anxious or panicky as covering your mouth and nose might affect the air you breathe. This can cause symptoms like feeling dizzy or sick." I've had similar experiences where I have felt dizzy and with some conversations. I've had similar experiences where I have felt dizzy and with some conversations with other students, I found that I'm not the only one. A friend was in school when she fully passed out during class because of the mask she was forced to wear. She wasn't even in PE class, just sitting in her chair. I can understand why we were asked to wear them when this all started back in twenty twenty, but when we had a little, very little knowledge, but here we are over two years later with a lot more info. I can go, I can go into more detail about the scientific data about how the pore size of even the N ninety-five mask is larger than the actual virus itself, making the mask useless in guarding against COVID, but I won't. I could quote passages from recent court rulings declaring that the mask mandate was illegal and a violation of our due process rights, but I won't. I could detail the CDC data showing that teen suicide rates have increased fifty-one percent in the last year, but I won't. I only have three minutes. I would ask that the board put aside their personal and political feelings regarding the mask mandate in school and allow families and students to choose for themselves. Masks should be optional. Families and students know it's best for themselves academically, academically and equally as important emotionally. I'd like to live a life with freedom to choose for myself. I don't want to live a life of fear hiding behind a mask. Thank you."
Next is parent Kristin Griffith.
Followed by student Cosette Vela. Followed by, uh, sorry, parent Jim Mann.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Griffith. We have five kids, three graduated from LHS, one is at LHS, and then we have a sixth grader also. The mask-related protective measures that surround the current situation for COVID nineteen, as evidenced by various school districts across the nation, is one of inconsistency. Do some districts wish to create dangers by not requiring mandates for masks in their schools? Are others enacting blanket mask mandate requirements with hard scientific evidence making the requirement undeniably defensible? Neither is true. The practice variation is driven by governors, mayors, school officials, employers, and public health officials who reference each other, change their positions without supporting objective data, and impose summary edicts that are open to legitimate question for validation. The differences of policy standards are bewildering to all of us. For our students who are being taught how to critically think matters through, the variation of requirements which can and do flip from merely crossing a state line or county line is disconcerting. Our students are smart and they see the inconsistency and lack of principle to scientifically concrete facts being replaced by do this because I say so. Facts surrounding disease don't typically begin or end at borderlines. They are constants until proven otherwise. The common sense weighting of relative risks when exposed to COVID nineteen for our students, staff, and teachers is rarely mentioned, nor differentiated by age, health condition, one's natural immunity status, or whether they receive the vaccine. This would be baseline population risk profiling. To not present these facts insulting, to not present these facts insulting to our younger generations and borders on fear mongering. The actual subject of face mask coverings that might offer a definitive reduction in risk as a protective measure is sidestepped and not objectively profiled, nor is a mask's effectiveness aligned to the risks of being exposed to someone actively infected and contagious, symptomatic or not, vaccinated, or as one possessing natural immunity from prior infection while under the age of eighteen. And this was sent by Todd and May Evans, who have two kids that graduated from LHS, but they couldn't be here, so I said I'd read it for them. Thank you.
Cosette, Cosette, thank you. And again, Cosette is followed by Jim Mann, who's a parent, followed by Socrates Vela, parent.
Hello, my name is Cosette Bella and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School. If you follow the news at all, you have probably heard a lot of talk in the past week about shifting from pandemic to endemic. What this really means is that states are realizing that COVID is just something that we are going to have to live with. Viral respiratory pathogens have existed and will continue to exist in coexistence with humans and animals forever. Variants will also continue to occur as the way the viruses survive is through viral mutations, which as a result creates variants. We understand that the COVID nineteen virus was new and had higher death rates initially, like in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. But at this point, it is clear that the newest variants have been significantly less deadly. On January thirty-first, Dr. Fauci himself stated that Omicron was going in the right direction and that coronavirus cases would fall to manageable levels in the coming months. We are in no way denying or undermining the existence of COVID. Personally, I know for a fact that coronavirus is real, as I have had a teammate whose mom has recently passed from it, which was absolutely heartbreaking to hear. However, we think that it's time to transition to a different stage and learn to live with COVID in our lives that we can head back to normalcy. Additionally, after the judge ruled the restraining order against the masks last Friday and our school district did not match that order, it sparked a lot of controversy. Everyone has their reasons for wearing a mask and we think that if people feel more comfortable wearing a mask, then by all means, they should do so. However, we are simply asking for a choice. People can wear masks if they choose to do so, but we should not be forced to wear them. Furthermore, looking at this issue from a broader perspective, only nine out of the fifty states still have school mask mandates, including Illinois. And many of them are easing up on their mask mandates in the next few weeks. We have seen so many of our neighboring schools like Carmel, Lake Zurich, Lake Forest, Arlington Heights, Libertyville District Seventy Schools, shift to mask optional, which although brings hope for our school, it is nonetheless frustrating because our school is one of the few who seems to not have budged. Please understand our frustration stems from all these factors, but the main factor and the reason we are here and have been protesting this past week is because in three weeks, it will mark the two-year mark since our normal sophomore lives for me were suddenly halted. We have lost half of our high school years to COVID and we can't get those years back. Speaking for the seniors specifically, now we are all here to try to get the absolute most that we can out of the next three years or three months. We know there's nothing we can do about the past, but we want to do as much as possible right now. Thank you.
Jim Mann.
Okay, he may have stepped out. I'll come back. Socrates Vela, Bella, excuse me.
Well, thank you for being here. You've done okay, you know. We've gotten to this point. I was very shocked that we, that we didn't take the jump into going mask optional and following Judge Grishaw's order. But now you have a great opportunity, right? Judge Grishaw has opened up the door for you. The question is whether you're willing to walk through it. Fear is in all of us, okay? So don't let it cripple you. Six hundred districts have gone mask optional. Indiana, Wisconsin, Iowa, mask optional. And then you had the Super Bowl yesterday, which I'm pretty sure all of you were watching. So I hope your decisions are not politically motivated or hindered politically. If they are, the truth will come out if and when each one of you are investigated. The Constitution protects all of our rights to due process. I wore the army uniform to ensure that, that we all have that ability. If you're not willing to go optional, as American citizens, you must afford my children due process or you will be knowingly violating the Fourteenth Amendment and the Fifth. We're here to remind you to follow the law. We've been following your mandates. We're asking you to follow the law. Before I go on, I heard there was a child in Vernon Hills High School that got a sixty-day suspension. I really would like for somebody to look into that and make sure that that child gets a second chance. I believe it's a senior. I also heard that Principal K was showing some bias in this building. Please look into that as well. He should not be shown bias and bullying kids. Stress is up. Students are cracking. Educators are feeling guilty. You have educators acting like bullies and policemen outside of buildings. We don't pay them to do that. D one twenty-eight legal fund is getting exhausted. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars sits there just for consultation. I'm assuming you're getting close to exhausting that. I'd like to know if anyone in D one twenty-eight acting on behalf of or has been in contact with Illinois Attorney General's Office. I don't need an answer today, but if, if anyone is aware of that, if Attorney General's Office has been in contact with our counsel about this issue, I'd like to know via email, please. Please end it now before you break it completely and we will not be able to put it back together. Thank you.
Calling again for Jim Mann. Okay, then we will go on to parent Paula Sterner. Followed by parent Daniella Gavrick. Followed by parent Linda Cerucci.
Before I start, would it be possible for you to, board members, to say their names? We don't have a name plate. I don't, I don't know who you are. Is it possible?
Kara Drumke.
Lisa Hessel.
Hold on.
Okay.
Superintendent Herman.
Jim Batson.
Casey Rooney.
Don Carmichael.
Can you say that again, please?
Sonal Kulkarni.
Okay.
Kara Benjamin.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I hope I get my minute back. Oh, thank you. All right. Well, I'm Paula Sterner. I live on Greenbrier Drive in Green Oaks. I have a daughter here as a senior and I have three sons that have graduated. I've also served as a board member. I'm a teacher, a retired educator. So I do wear a lot of hats. So I'm wanting to tell you that, you know, Judge Grishaw gave Illinois students their freedom back with a ruling that stated, "School districts cannot rely on their own authority to mandate masks, exclude students, and require vaccinations or testing, given students due process under the law." She explained that her ruling is not just for the named plaintiffs, and I didn't realize we had a named plaintiff, but it is for every public and private district in the state. Neither the governor, ISB, the Illinois Department of Public Health, nor school districts have authority to mandate masks, require vaccinations, exclude or test kids. So with this TRO, Temporary Restraining Order, in place, are you going to continue to require this stuff in our district even though you know what you're doing is going against the ruling? If you continue to force masking and these other related practices like excluding students, quarantining them due to contract tracing, you are doing so knowing it is unlawful and exposes the district from a liability standpoint. Additionally, unnamed plaintiffs such as the children in this district may choose to become part of the existing case with our own attorneys by seeking joiner. It's getting to be a mess. The board's stance on forced masking is unlawful and even embarrassing, especially given that many of our neighboring and feeder districts such as Oak Grove, Libertyville, Lake Forest, and Carmel have decided to follow the ruling for mask optional. Besides the ruling, there are biblical, constitutional, and practical reasons to support mask optional. Among them, did you know that veiling our faces destroys our ability to reflect God's image? Shine His light through smiles? And share His glory. Second Chronicles three eighteen says, "We are created to reflect God's image." His image is not masked. Masking our children actually blocks what God called his believers to do. From a constitutional perspective, we are all born with inalienable rights given to us by our Creator. Our rights come from God, not government. To paraphrase Peggy Hall, "Why does my student need to wear a raincoat to keep you dry?" If you believe masks work, you may choose to wear them. Others who trust natural immunity may choose not to wear them. When government creates edicts such as mask-wearing is no longer needed statewide, except in schools, this is clearly not about health anymore. It is about control. And forced masking, it's the right thing to do.
Please grab up your comments.
I would like to clarify your point about them not being able to vote is incorrect. If they had had a special meeting with it on the agenda,
Thank you.
you could have voted tonight. It's a cop-out what you all have done.
Hello, good evening. My name is Daniella Gavrich. I'm a lifelong Libertyville resident. I have two children, LHS, and I have one in District Seventy. I also have parents who have lived here since nineteen seventy-seven, I want to say, and have been taxpayers. Completely understanding why all their money or majority of their money, tax money goes to these schools. And recently, in having a conversation with them, they are just dumbfounded at why we can't allow our children to socially really communicate without masks. So much of communication is nonverbal and I can just say personally with my two sons, it's been really hard for them to meet and really understand just social cues of their peers. And I just think it's disappointing. They're both athletes. They struggle to always have a mask while playing sports. And it's just, it's inhibiting, I think, for them to really flourish as students here. My best memories at LHS, as I turn and look at so many friends and alumnis, is about building strong relationships. I also just wanted to tell you that it, it, it pains me to understand that we have the opportunity to be represented and you didn't really want to tell us that this was happening. I just asked that we do have an emergency board meeting that actually addresses giving everyone the option to wear a mask. We're not stating that students or administration don't have to wear masks. We're just saying, give everyone the choice. Just like in years past, we asked to either allow students to go virtually or to come in person. So in the past few years, I've had three students at three different schools with three different schedules. And all of that I followed because I understood that we were trying to figure out the science and the understanding of how to deal with this. We've passed that point. In District Seventy, they've allowed to go mask optional and that is one of my own kids that doesn't have to wear a mask and my other two do. The only other thing I want to say from an academic standpoint, my, both my sons are taking foreign languages. Do you know how extremely difficult it is for them to understand the material? They, they struggle to phonetically see and respond. They cannot see the movement of their teachers and it's not the same by them watching a video. I just really implore you to understand academically and socially how this is impacting kids. I don't want to repeat all the facts. I just want to say, this is personally for my two students, been really a challenge. Thank you.
Next, after Linda, we have Kristin Sorensen. Followed by student Justin St. Louis. Followed by parent Kevin Huber.
Hi, my name is Linda Sarachi. I didn't prepare any comments because I argued with myself all day about coming here. So this is stream of consciousness, but I'll be well under three minutes. New to the area, came to the area for Vernon Hills High School. Really love the school and the reason that I'm here tonight is I would very much like you to consider going mask optional. There's really nothing I can say that hasn't been said here already. I don't have a legal background. I don't have a lot of, you know, statistics on COVID. I just am asking you here as a parent, a human, to recognize that at this point, I think we are at a point where if we could please just give kids the choice. And I think they would be respectful, kids on both sides. It would be less divisive if we give them that choice. I work in an industry where I have to call upon people to change their mind. And I know that if you come up and you're angry or you talk to them in a certain way, they're not going to. I don't come to meetings like this. I never have because I don't like to be in a venue where people get mad. I see, you know, a few people, a few rows ahead of me getting angry when certain people would talk, so wasn't eager to come up here. But what I want to say to you is, in a state with, I think, 12 million or 12.7 million people, Lake County, I look, I think we have 690,000 people. We have hospitalizations of 1,800 right now. It's the lowest it's been in, I think, three months, so it's very low. If you were to make the decision today, just with that information, masks weren't required, would you require it given what you have today? Another reason I came here was I'm having difficulty explaining to my child why certain districts have required this and others haven't. I heard some kids talking amongst themselves. They were wondering if wealthier school districts got to go mask optional. Of course, that's not the reason. So I came here tonight really because I just was trying to understand why when the judge made that ruling, it didn't change here. I know you said no answers will be given, no decisions will be made tonight, but just please consider that the kids who came up here were extremely brave. I'm appreciative of attorneys that came up here with their legal knowledge. I'm just one parent having a really tough time watching this impact on my child for so long. And if you could just please look at the facts as they are today and maybe change your mind. Thank you.
Parent Kristin Sorensen.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kristin Sorensen. I have two children here at LHS and one also in District 68. So I'm speaking tonight as a parent. I also have children who chose to deal with this week's events in two different ways. One who chose to peacefully protest and one who felt that the academic consequences of missing out on class would be too much. And so briefly speaking to the comment earlier that kids were doing this because their friends weren't, I can assure you that the kids this week who stayed out of class and enacted their rights by not wearing a mask only lost friends, if anything. We all know this, this has been an extremely difficult last two years, and I do not envy the position that you guys are in as board members. There's no playbook as to how to navigate a pandemic well. And I recognize that there are varying perspectives that you must consider as you make your decisions. District 128, as we've heard this evening, has prided themselves on being a leader in our community. And I hope that this reputation can, can continue, and it feels that this is in your hands this evening. There are now close to 550 districts that have made the decision to go mask optional, including several in our surrounding communities, as it has been said today. Many people have said to me over the past week that speaking tonight to our school board is a hopeless cause, that your minds have been already made up regardless of what anyone in our district has to say. But I have to believe that that is not the case. I'm sorry, should I pause? No, okay.
We'll continue.
Okay, just watch my time, please. I believe that each of you ran for the elected office of school board representative because you genuinely care about each of our kids, about their academic pursuits during their high school years. I believe that your interests lie with our children and that we can trust you to make the best decision for all of our kids. As we've learned more throughout the pandemic and about COVID's effect and the ways that we can protect ourselves and each other's, our processes have changed. We've prided ourselves on being adaptable and we've expected our kids to do the same, and they have. Our district worked hard to provide fully remote learning. Then this past fall, you worked hard to provide in-person learning after realizing the consequences that these kids endured by staying home. They struggled emotionally, mentally, and socially and being remote, and you allowed them to come back in. I know my time's going to be up. I'm paying attention and I'm almost done. Now, six minutes into in-person, six months into in-person learning, we in the state of Illinois are an island in the Midwest, being one of only a few states in the entire country requiring masks for kids in schools. As stated tonight, we know that the number of COVID cases is no different for us than our neighboring communities and states. We have vaccinated, we have quarantined, we have masks to prevent COVID outbreaks, and it has still found us. We've now learned that COVID is something that we all have to learn with, live with. And thankfully, we are all about to do what is best to protect ourselves and our loved ones. We can get vaccinated, we can get boosted, we can wear an N95 mask, the only actual mask that will keep us safe. But what we cannot currently do in District 128 is care for the emotional and social, social needs of our kids by allowing them to choose whether they wear a mask or not. We've been afforded that right by the court system, but not by our school board. I ask each of you today to consider that each of the students you represent, the students you represent in our district, is not only a physical being, but also a spiritual and emotional and social being as well. All of their needs must be cared for. And today, we are asking for the board to continue to be a leader in the state of Illinois. We are not asking for a mask-free school.
Please wrap up your comments.
We are, I know, I was interrupted a little bit, so, and there was some clapping. My understanding is that the mask issue is not something that will be voted on this evening. I urge each of you to consider what your purpose is in not coming to a decision on this issue or laying out for our district a plan to the endemic. I trust you will honor the elected position that you are in to make the best decision for each of our students. Thank you.
Next, we have student Justin St. Louis, followed by parent Kevin Huber, followed by parent Steve St. Louis.
We should ask you to put on a mask, please.
I do actually not have to as I'm a plaintiff listed on the case.
You are not here attending school, so this is after hours, so we ask that you-
That does not apply. I, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. If you make me put a mask on, you will be held in contempt of court going against a court order. It states anytime in the school building, I do not have to wear a mask. If you force me to wear a mask, we will with Mr. DeVor take you to court and hold you in contempt of court for violating a direct judge order.
Okay, the committee is in recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you. We, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for wearing a mask. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to bring us back to order here. We really do want to hear everyone speak. We want you to be able to have the opportunity to speak, but we need everyone to follow the, the protocols that are in place currently in the district. So we will continue. We really need to follow the protocols.
Are you ready to go to court for this? There are, I, I just want to say, the athletic director for our school is already having to do the same thing because he followed the same rule. He forced me and my sister, both plaintiffs, to wear masks. Though the ruling specifically states that anytime I'm in, I am in the school building, there is no mention of in the building during the whole hour.
It's for school, it's for school and not for after hours. For during the school day.
Thank you. We, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for wearing a mask. Thank you.
So. Hello, my name is Justin St. Louis and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School. First, I just want to speak about the ruling. Since the ruling stated that Pritzker's mandate is null and void, that means you guys had to come to your own conclusion that you thought as a board, it was your best idea to put masks on all the kids. If you are to do such a thing, you have to give all the kids their day in court to explain why you are masking them. You cannot take out their due process and just totalitarian, put the mask on them like you rule over all of us. That is not how the law works. Second off, I'm a student who plays sports. I came straight from basketball practice, I sewed my practice jersey on to come here and speak. I have to wear masks while playing basketball. My whole entire life, I've struggled with asthma. It has affected- My whole entire life, I've struggled with asthma. It has affected me since I got my first inhaler when I was four years old. Wearing a mask while playing basketball is one of the worst things I can do. I have to take a rescue inhaler before every single basketball game I play. Because if I did not, during the game, my lungs would have an asthma attack. I had to do that before the mask. Now, if you can imagine the toll it takes on my body with the mask. The mask already takes lowers the oxygen level. I'm intaking and outtaking with the CO2 inside the mask. And now you add that on top of the fact that my lungs don't work correctly. As cited by my doctor who works at the Condell in Libertyville. I have scar tissue at the bottom of my lungs from all the asthma attacks I've had in my life. So my lungs have never worked at 100% capacity in the past few years. I then have to wear a mask that limits my capacity to breathing. If you can understand the effect that takes on my body to wear a mask while I'm playing basketball. I have had other people's blood on me while playing the game. I had other people's sweat all over me while playing the game. I am touching and grabbing defenders the whole entire game. So what does wearing a mask do? I'm contracting everything they have on all other aspects of my body. But I have to wear a mask on my face, which only hurts me. It gives no benefit to me. It does not protect me from anything on the floor. But all it does is it has, it has just ruined my respiratory system. And how long I can go on withholding my breath, how long I can play without just being exasperated and tired from stuff like that. Being a plaintiff, I'm still here to represent the rest of the people. I believe everybody should have a choice to be mask optional. And you know, when being around the school and just getting a poll from people, I'd say it's about two people in every class, to the 20 in the other, the 20 in the other are just on the same board as I am. And I can know because people move away from me now, being maskless in school. But it has never been more than three people in a class that moved away from me. You should rule in what is in majority favor of the students. A majority of the students at both schools want masks to be optional. So maybe stop with your totalitarian rule over all of us and do something for the students instead. Thank you.
Parent Kevin Huber, followed by parent Steve St. Louis.
Okay, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just wanted to have a few comments. And first, a point of information. And I think this board knows this. Anytime a meeting is published, anytime an item is on the agenda, and anytime there is a quorum present, a motion may be made on any item on that agenda. I talked to Lynn Hines about that when I was on this board personally. So to say that there cannot be a vote is disingenuous. There certainly can be a motion and vote if you have the desire to make one and take a vote. And that's just straight Roberts rules of orders, not that difficult. As a former board member and someone who looked at all sides of a problem, I've been disappointed by the handling of the mask mandatory mask optional fiasco this past week. While I may not agree with where you all ended up, the way it was decided and shared with the public was poorly handled. Your lack of accountability and lack of metrics in managing a situation was disheartening. Those of you with board experience learned through the school opening remote discussions that tough situations need to be managed objectively with data and communicated timely and with grace. This was a case study in how not to handle a difficult situation. Where was any type of leadership in this process? You were elected to make a decision, own it, and communicate it properly. Where has been the debate on both sides of the mask mandate? From the silence, lack of urgency, and lack of debate, I believe we are to assume that you all believe a mask mandate is necessary at this point in time. Unfortunately, your belief is not supported by local metrics data, nor a majority of the community you represent. I wonder if each and how each of you weighed in. As if you're going to be held accountable for a decision, which you clearly are being held accountable for it, then you should have the opportunity to debate it. The board hiding behind the attorney, which again, it appears we're hiding behind the attorney tonight again. And let's not kid ourselves and think that you all did not tell the attorney the opinion that you wanted came to a conclusion without any appropriate processes. Do you know or understand how a majority of your constituents feel? You represent all of us, not just the vocal minority that showed up at the polls and got you elected. The majority of us understand there's a time and place for masking. The majority of us are triple vaccinated and have taken all the precautions to protect others. The majority of us fall in the mask optional camp, but you continue to ignore this. Why? I have to ask why. Have you talked with your teachers and asked them the thoughts? Or do you rely upon the National Union narrative of Randy Weingarten, president of the FT? The masks are necessary until COVID is eliminated. I'm betting many of our local teachers also feel that masks at this point in the cycle are not necessary. Opinions of individual board members do matter. Opinions of the individual teachers do matter. Opinions of the middle 80% of our community matter. I believe everyone agrees that the handling of this issue needs to be based upon local metrics, not the CDC, state of Illinois, or local health department recommendations solely. This information has to be supplemented with more specific local metrics. What's the vaccination rates of D128? Hospitalization at Condell? All this matters. Well, I had to have a point of information for the board first, but that's fine. Since we have to keep educating. When I sat with many of you, you, we all acknowledge as the board members, it's about the kids. When I ran against some of you as a candidate, and it was a very polite polite election, every single one of you said, first and foremost, it's about the kids. You were not elected to protect the community. That's the fiduciary responsibility of other groups. Yours responsibility is the kids first.
Please wrap up your comments. We have many people.
I have one sentence left. Because I'm going to trust that future decisions by this board will remember it's the kids.
Next, parent Steve St. Louis, followed by student Christopher Hannigan, followed by parent Jeff Franz.
My name is Steve St. Louis. I am a Vernon Hills resident and father of four children. First, I'd like to say how proud I am of my son. This is the second or third time he stood up from administration and requested due process and exercised his amendment rights that are not being heard and falling on deaf ears. So I really don't have a lot to say. There's we basically know, everybody knows that the kids are at zero risk for this disease. So there has to be something else going on here. Right? Well, I mean, there has to be something else going on. More, more kids die of pneumonia than they do of COVID. So why haven't we been wearing masks for the last, I don't know, 100 years? Good question, right? If, if in fact you guys are making decisions based on data that I haven't seen, has anyone else seen the data? I, I think we have the right to know the data, the matrix at which you guys are making your sound moral judgments about the faith of our kids, right? And I think that also we should have the right to challenge and bring other opinions into this situation. Rather than your just little closed rooms behind your masks, behind your emails that tell us what we have to do and take a knee to these tyrannical mandates. And at last, I just want to say there is no time in history of mankind that I'm aware where people with any kind of moral judgment put the kids in front of the parents as a first line of defense.
Would you please put on your face covering, please? Thank you.
Again, I will repeat, when is it that a moral adult puts children at the front line of defense to save adults? It is the adults that are standing in front of children to protect the children. That's what this is supposed to be.
Hello, members of the school board, assembled parents, my fellow students. My name is Christopher Hannigan, and I am a senior here at LHS. I had three older sisters graduate from the school, and I have to say that they were all very happy with the education they received. And my parents moved here for the education that this district provides. Before the pandemic, I was able to experience one year of normalcy, one normal school year. This school, that school year gave me a baseline from which to judge the excellency of the school district that I have no doubt that it can achieve. However, these last two years have not proved the excellence this school can achieve. I take some of the most difficult classes in this district. And they have been a cakewalk for me because of the declining standards, because some people on the board have decided to put politics over educating us, the students. So as Kevin Huber said, I would like to ask you to please focus on educating us, the students. I understand you have a lot to do. And that there's a lot of data to look at, opinions, and on both sides, not always expressed correctly. Finally, I would like to say that I'm a little bit disappointed. My family was in contact with one of you. And I was disappointed to hear from that person that there was only one of you on the school board who would even consider removing the mask mandate. This was very disheartening. I'm not sure that's true. This is just what I've been communicating. Now, in closing, I would like you to reconsider your decision. And I will hope that you will listen to all people and that you would not be intimidated by anyone on either side. Thank you.
Again, next, we have parent Jeff Franz, student Trevor Jean, and parent Lawrence Mary Marks, excuse me, Marks.
So I don't really have prepared statement because I knew my wife would do a much better job than I would, but there's a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share. First off, as the husband of a board member, I know how difficult your jobs are. People see you at the meetings. What they don't see are the hours and hours behind the scenes. But as far as I can tell, there's really only one reason to keep this mandate. And the only reason is to protect others. I can't see any reason behind that, beyond that. And I put some notes in here. I read the New York Times every day. What I read yesterday was that drug overdoses are up for the last two years. Whereas in 2019, they were down. Is that directly attributed masks? I don't know, but it's a data point. But what I really wanted to talk about, as we refer to caring for other students, is that what's lost is that every person in this room has the tools to protect themselves. Every student has the tools to protect themselves. According to the New York Times, I'm sorry, from the Atlantic, one way masking works. If you're vaccinated, boosted, and wearing an N95, you're protected, no matter what others are doing. Goes on to quote Joseph Allen, a COVID expert and ventilation expert from Harvard. I mean, there's not much else in life that would have as low a risk as that. I would qualify your risk as the minimus. I didn't go to LHS, so I had to look that up. It means too trivial or minor to merit consideration. This is an expert on COVID from Harvard, not some far right wing person saying that this is the minimus. So why are we doing this? Everyone can protect themselves. So I've got two asks for you. One is, show us the data that you will use to make these choices. Before I came here tonight, I was speaking to a colleague in Wisconsin. I said, I've got to go. He's like, where are you going? We have a debate, or we have a discussion about mask mandates. Like, you guys still have mask mandates? I said, you don't? He said, we have clear metrics that are on our school's dashboard that determines when we have masks and when we don't. That's my first ask for you. My second ask is, can we please do away with the theater? I think it's ironic that we're in this room because most of this is theater. For anyone who is serious about COVID, if you're not wearing an N95 mask, you're lying to yourself. If you're not fitting that mask properly, you're lying to yourself. I see people all over the place. N95 masks, big gaping holes. So please, sit, again, I'll reiterate that. Show us the metrics that we will use to move in and out. And again, stop with the theater theatrics. Last point, sorry. Basketball game the other night, I have pictures I will send to you. Half the kids with respect to the student from Vernon Hills who says he wears it. I haven't seen a single kid wear a mask at a basketball game all season long. And none of the fans are. So either do it or stop with the theater and let us move on. Thank you and thank you for your service.
Hello, my name is Trevor Jean, and I'm a senior here at Libertyville High School.
Trevor, can you pull your mask up, please? Not on your chin. Thank you.
Gotcha. I, I also wrestle here. And if you know, wrestling is probably one of the highest sports where you can contract the disease virus. When I wrestle, I don't wear a mask. Okay? And, but I think it's crazy. Over these past two weekends, I've competed in regionals and sectionals surrounded by hundreds of strangers who have not been wearing masks. And no symptoms. All right? Asymptomatic? No. I tested negative for COVID twice. I'd like to talk about the education or the lack of education I've been receiving due to being locked into a room filled with unmasked people. Although it is my choice to stay in that room and stand up for what I know is right. I just wanted to bring to the attention how just foolish this is. I sit in a room all day and receive the lack of education I'm not being taught to. I purposely, actually, over these past couple days of school, I did not join a Zoom meeting with my teachers. Guess how many of my teachers reached out to me asking why I didn't join? Zero. Now, you say you put the students first. Put the students first. That's what everybody says, but how true is that? I look at you all. I don't see an expression on your face except for a couple rolled eyes. That, that's, that's about it. I don't, I don't see a face. I don't see a smile, you know? Maybe you guys should smile more. I don't want to go over the time, otherwise some people might start timing me. And I just, I just think this, I know this mandate should just be abolished. It's pretty simple. Thank you.
Next, we have parent Lawrence Marks, followed by Clarissa Latang, followed by Sue Mueller.
Good evening. I don't have a lot. Just a little story. In 2005, my wife and I were looking for a place in Chicagoland, and I grew up near the airport. My mom suggested that I check out Libertyville, and I thought it was a horrible idea. Libertyville was a farm town you passed once a year when you made the journey north to Great America. That's what I thought. And I finally did make the trip up Milwaukee Avenue. And we looked at a house for sale, and I met the senior citizen neighbors who had an orange paw in their front yard. And I thought it was interesting because I mean, they clearly, for sure, didn't have high schoolers and hadn't for a long time. And so we talked about why they had the orange paw. And after hearing what, you know, how, how behind the high school they were and the kind of community it was, I knew I was home. And, you know, obviously, we're here. We finally have, we waited all that time. We finally have kids in high school and couldn't be happier to be a part of the Libertyville community. And today, I was part of the jointer that was filed downstate to be a plaintiff in a lawsuit against the reason I moved to Libertyville, against you, against the school district. And it's, it's crazy town. Because we still love the school. So the idea that now we're opponents. But I couldn't let you guys continue to control my son or my daughter. After seeing how you guys responded to the judge's ruling. Not in a public forum. Some sort of backroom conversations that took place between enough people to know that you had each other's back. And went forward. It is mind blowing to me that you guys have not called a special meeting yet. And, and thankfully these, what, what, what the second speaker tonight called ignorant extremists. And the crowd, we're lucky that Kevin Hebrew was among them to let us know that we actually could vote tonight. And so I am here. I'm here to ask one brave soul to make a motion at the appropriate time and one more brave soul to second it. And let's see where the cards lie. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Clarissa Latang. I'm a senior at Libertyville High School along with my twin sister sitting here next to me. In the beginning of my high school years, I was unmasked and made many new friends. Coming from a small middle school, I was hesitant to, to come to a big school. Being able to see new faces and expressions was one of the highlights of my high school career. My second semester sophomore year, that was, that privilege was stripped from me. Throughout quarantine, I was unable to see many of my friends and make new ones. Being able to come back into high school to learn in front of my teachers and not through a screen was a big relief. At the beginning of my senior year, I began to notice how sad it, how sad it I was not being able to see my peers faces at school, which is where I see most of my friends. I have developed depression through this time and that has lowered my self-esteem and especially my way of showing my emotions. I am very nervous and scared to get up here to express my feelings as I wrote this in the audience. I'm, I am proud of myself for taking this step. One day I was sitting in class drinking water and I had a sip. As he was taking attendance, he looked at me and called me Mrs. Omicron because I had my mask pulled down to drink my water. This is not right. Teachers should not be calling kids out when I am trying to stay hydrated during my school day. Before the school year, students were told if we got vaccinated, we'd be allowed to come to school maskless. My sister and I got that vaccine and here we are today fighting to earn our civil rights back and go to school maskless. As we had been secluded in a separate room from others, we have been judged and harassed by others at school. I began to came very nervous to walk in the hallway during passing periods because I would be judged. It was very hard for me to stay in this room the past week away from my teachers. Lastly, I would like to thank Dr. K and the school administration for supporting us through this tough time. Thank you.
Parent Sue Mueller. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing it, it definitely starts with an M. Sue Naylor. If you signed up to speak, this will be our last in-person speaker.
This is. So my name is Sue Mulligan. I am a parent of LHS. I am, my youngest daughter is a junior. I've had four kids go through the school. One of the previous speakers said they didn't have the statistics. So my husband sent me the statistics. According to the Lake County Coronavirus Data Hub, the number of new incidents of COVID-19 in Lake County is declining in accelerating rate. It's hard to breathe in these things. On February 12th, the average incident rate over the last seven years, seven days, sorry, seven day moving average among children 14 to 18 in Lake County was 23 per 100,000, equivalent to about point one eight. Point one eight of a new case per day in District 128. I think that says it all. It's not fair.
Thank you. We're going to move into a few minutes of the email comments. We have far too many to read in the time allotted, but I do want to thank everybody that came tonight to voice their opinions and their concerns in person and I appreciate that. And especially the students who stepped up and I appreciate what, what they had to say as well.
The, excuse me, the first letter is from Laura Rash to our principal, administration and teachers. Thank you for all that you do to keep our children safe and a top priority. You have my utmost respect and support. Next letter is from Jennifer Mulcrone. Without any notice or communication to the towns that you serve, this board filed for an appeal of the temporary restraining order granted by Judge Grishow instead of asking for a clarification to determine if the TRO applies to all students in the district or just to the name plaintiffs. You took it upon yourselves to waste our tax dollars and duplicate efforts by the Illinois Attorney General to affirmatively demand that mask mandates continue. What about what this community wants? Why haven't you sent out one of your surveys to see if we want you to spend our tax money on this? Why no emergency meeting of the board to allow the community to voice their opinions and direct your efforts? Illinois is one of only six states now with mask mandates remaining in schools. Do you really think that this board knows better than the entire populations of 44 other states? Are you that drunk with power? Mask mandates have gone on for too long and it is time to allow our children to get back to normal life. Children have not worn masks to school in dozens of other states for months and even years. Illinois kids have suffered long enough with masks and they deserve better. It is time to stop hiding behind outdated health guidelines. With regard to the events of the week of February 7th, you called the police on children and had them escorted out of school. Yes, Denise School Resource Officer, officers are police. You forced your frontline school administration into the horrible position of calling law enforcement on kids and then required your administrators to actively prevent students from obtaining the education they deserve. The damage you have done and are doing is immeasurable and the waste of community resources is inexcusable. No one wants you to violate Illinois law as misguided as it is, only to comply with it. Your lawyer undoubtedly advised you on the legal risks of violating the TRO. And if you are wrong in that the TRO applies to all students in the district as many, many other local districts have interpreted the ruling. Then you have opened District 128 up to unnecessarily unnecessary liability. And you should all resign your positions in disgrace. This shows a serious lack of judgment. In Illinois, I believe a violation of an order of protection is a class A misdemeanor punishable by a jail sentence of up to a year and a maximum fine of $2,500. I hope Judge Grishow holds each and every one of you legally accountable for your decisions. Enough is enough. Masks should be optional in D128 until a court order directs you otherwise. The next letter is from Emily Latang. My name is Emily Latang. I am a senior at Libertyville High School. I believe our district should be mask optional. Majority of the country has gone mask optional in their schools, including Lake Forest High School and Carmel Catholic High School. The COVID-19 pandemic started when I was just a sophomore. I got vaccinated, wore my mask and still got COVID. The virus is here to stay. We need to learn to live with it. The virus is exponentially less deadly or harmful than before. Which justifies why students should have a choice to wear the mask on school grounds. Enforcing students to get vaccinated just so they can stay in school if they get contact traced is unethical. The vaccine does not prevent the spread of COVID-19. I am one of many examples to prove it. The guidelines for quarantine have gone down by nine days. If students test positive for COVID-19, it makes sense to have just those individuals stay home for five days, but not their peers who are not sick. As Americans, we should have the choice to wear a mask and get vaccinated, especially for a virus that is highly unlikely to hospitalize or kill people who are not at high risk. For individuals who are at high risk, they can choose to wear a mask. After all, wearing a mask has been proven to only protect the individual wearing it, not from people surrounding them. The next message is from Jake Gimbert. We should be mask optional because for the past two years I have seen nothing but my teachers and peers' eyes and hair. I don't know the person who I'm depending on to teach me to continue on the rest on in life because of success, to become a successful individual. I don't truly know the kids sitting next to me in class that I am supposed to be working with. My teachers have been assuming the students in my class and I have been understanding what they are saying because they can't see our facial expressions. The next message is from Matthew Kazian. Masks should be optional in District 128. Kids are being held in separate classrooms that refuse to wear a mask, while other kids are let to class just because they comply to put on a mask on. Many schools have loosened their mask rules and allowed optional masks. We have all followed the rules for two plus years now and we want to move on and start living a normal life. Making masks optional is a start in the right direction to a normal life. Per the judge's order, masks need to be optional. It's the right thing to do and a legal thing to do. The next message is from Luke Kazian. I am a sophomore at Libertyville High School and for the last week I have been protesting the mask mandate. This has been a tough week standing up for what I believe is right. I've been harassed all week by students and some teachers. My, many schools around us have dropped the mask mandate and have made it optional for students. I believe Libertyville High School should drop the mask mandate. Forty-two states have dropped the mask mandate and all have been fine. Libertyville High School has been wasting our tax dollars on COVID instead of our school and our education. There's only been more and more schools making it optional. It's not the time to try and prove yourself right by not making it optional and continue to waste our tax dollars trying to stand strong and prove yourself right. JB Pritzker has lifted our mask mandate on the 28th and it's time to start getting back to normal. Highland, Oak Grove and all the elementary schools around us have made it optional, but not the high school. Doesn't make much sense to me. The only reason I can think of is because of our selfish and same thought board. If Libertyville High School does not make it the mask mandate optional, good luck in court. Next message is from Joseph Mavia. My name is Joey Mavia and I'm a sophomore at Libertyville High School. I appreciate teachers taking time out of their day to sit in our alternative classroom with us, but I believe the school should be mask optional. They separate kids into two rooms and not a lot of our teachers send us work to do. And if they do, it is something difficult to complete. We, we want to go to class. I understand that it is our choice to not go to class. But we want to stand up for what we believe is right. D128 should make masks an option as other schools in the state are doing. Next message is from Hunter Hill. Hello, board. I am here to show my desire to have a choice if I wear a mask or not. I was one of the kids who chose not to wear masks at school this past week. And after the governor's mandate was null and void, I was forced to be separated from my peers and forced to have a lesser learning experience than them. I want to have the choice not to wear a mask, which has been scientifically proven to not be effective in stopping the spread of COVID. I and many other students would like the same learning as our peers and be able to have a choice in what we do. The next message is from Jennifer Ron. As a mother of a junior at Vernon Hills High School and emergency physician, I applaud and respect the vigilance and hard work that allowed my son and all students to remain in school safely and learn in person this year. It is of utmost importance that we lend our support and help each other through these difficult times. I'm sure that very soon, based on the number of COVID patients I'm seeing now, that restrictions will be lifted. We must allow the public health experts and administrators to do their job and make the recommendations that have, that have kept our children safe. This message is from Vanessa Stalter. Thank you for taking the time to read my email. I have a freshman daughter at LHS. As a former teacher and a graduate of LHS, I consider Libertyville School District to be one of the most sought after school districts in the area. When my daughter began her academic schooling, my husband and I wanted to be a part of the district because of the accolades and recognition it has always had in the past. Although my daughter has had a great start to high school, I do not feel as if you are doing enough to provide the best learning environment for her. As she watches district after district move forward with mask option, I can see her unhappiness and disappointment in the school. As a school board, you have various roles. One, a board should be the voice of the community. Two, the board should act as an advocate for our school district and school. And three, the board should communicate with the community and build community support. In my opinion, you have failed in all three of these aspects. While communities around us have held emergency meetings after the court order on Friday, February 4th, you stood silent. As a board, you are responsible for the success or failure of the public education of the students. You are failing them as advocates. As parents, we are asking to give the students a choice if they choose to wear a mask or not. They have suffered enough already. With the statistics going down, there is no reason that this decision should be a difficult one. I have seen so much hatred in our community against each other this past week that truthfully, I am appalled. I firmly believe that if you listen to the community and what is requested and at this point necessary in our community, you may gain the respect that you have lost throughout this time. I am writing to you in the hopes you can finally for once be the advocates that you signed up to be and provide a mask option choice for these students. Thank you for taking the time to listen. This message is from Carla Burke. Dr. Herman, Mr. Kelly and the board. We are emailing again with regard to the ruling in Sagamon County. The choice made by them, by many local districts as well as many districts across our entire state to go mask optional. We are again appalled by the substandard response by District 128 to the students, our families, the taxpayers in the community as a whole. We expected compliance and that all associated legal precedents would be followed. We are absolutely dismayed that you are the elected members to represent the community and our school. Again, there is no regard for science metrics and what is in the best interest of our students. It is honestly mind boggling that our district leaders believe they are above the law and continue in this game using our students as pawns. Over the past week, parents and students have followed the proper channels to be heard in order to ask for mask optional. It's our right to do so. The students have attended school only to be met with intimidation, coercion and division. You have quarantined our kids away in the auditorium, in gyms, in other subpar spaces, away from their peers, away from any sort of instruction. Teachers have been given the choice to allow them to Zoom, provide coursework or materials to their students. You are violating your oath and the Illinois Constitution to each and every student, to their right to an education. It is disgraceful. Our students are being pushed out of the school, given choices that are unjust and jeopardizing their education and participation in sports. They have been met at the doors by principals, administrators, teachers, security and the police. They have been threatened with consequences and some have received them. That is bullying. You made an unscientific decision and determined our students are considered a health threat. No, you are the threat to their education, to their constitutional rights, to their mental health, to their very safety and security, which with, with which you have been entrusted. You have created an You have created an environment where our kids who are segregated have been bullied and threatened for wanting mask optional. Our students have been put in a position that is completely unacceptable. And they have been more than brave to stand up for their rights in education. They are merely asking for an option, which is more than scientifically justified, two years into this pandemic. How do you honestly justify safety? Excuse me, insecurity? When most other schools around you 128 are mask optional, including our own elementary District 70.
How many are left?
I'm sorry?
How many are left?
Oh, I have. I have 50.
Have a drink, we'll do a couple more and then that'll be it or time.
Excuse me. This message is from Brad Sterner. Remove the ridiculous mask mandate. Illinois is one of only five states in the United, in the United States to have a statewide mandate. All others have a recommended, no guidance or mandates are actually banned, including the surrounding states of Wisconsin, Indiana. Iowa, Kentucky and Missouri. Of 1,070 school districts in Illinois, over 520 and counting have lifted the mask mandate to optional or no masking. This includes. Sorry, the two Libertyville High School feeder districts, Oak Grove District 68. The five school, Libertyville School District 70. And surrounding high schools, Lake Forest and Carmel Catholic High Schools. As the board and superintendent well know, Oak Grove has never had masks. Since the start of the 2122 school year. Has the school closed, sent students home? Were there mask bullying incidences? Were students who refused to wear masks segregated? No, of course not. The board and the superintendent are aware of the above facts. And yet they still wait until now to decide if the ridiculous mask mandate should be lifted. Libertyville High School has always led, not followed. It's disappointing to say the least that we have had to wait this long. And the next message is from Brian Burnett. Thank you to the teachers, staff and administrators of our school. That have endured an unbearable burden throughout the pandemic, both at work and home. Does two plus two equal four? Are science and math proper subjects to be taught in schools? Do we respect teachers? And are we concerned for their health? Does the application of scientific methods such as placebo-controlled clinical trials improve our lives? Are we experiencing a once in a 100-year pandemic? Has the virus that caused COVID-19 killed over 900,000 Americans? Have healthcare facilities been overrun with patients corresponding to the high virus infection rates? Do masks and social distancing reduce the spread of COVID-19? The answer to each of these questions is unequivocally yes. Wearing a mask is like basic arithmetic. Especially when our community is not fully vaccinated and a high incidence of virus is still prevalent. Proper mask wearing has developed based on the scientific method to reduce the spread of the disease. It also benefits people who aren't wearing a mask. Of course, we are tired of practicing scientific, scientifically proven COVID. COVID-19 mitigation strategies. We are living in a once in a century emergency requiring extreme effort. Along with the evidence that proper masking reduces disease transmission and eases burdens on the healthcare system. Wearing masks is our civic duty, like returning a misplaced purse or wallet to its owner. Please don't let the politics of the day distract from what our schools and community need to reduce. Disease transmission. Mask wearing shows we care for each other. Thank you for continuing to require proper masking in our schools.
Okay, thank you, Mary. We are at our, our limit for the public comment. Thank you all for participating. We will move on to the other items in the meeting. So first up is the COVID-19 metrics and testing information.
Thanks Jim. We thought it'd be useful tonight to. To give a background information, some key dates over the past year. And then also. Bryant Kelly, Associate Superintendent. And then also share some of the COVID data that is currently on the district website. With, with, with people here in attendance, give you a visual of that data that is on the website. So. Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Give me one second.
Okay.
I gotta share this Zoom.
Sorry, he's sharing with, he's sharing with Zoom right now so that they can see.
We're able to see this on monitors in front of us. So for those of us that aren't turned around, we're, we're following along by looking at these monitors.
So if we go back to March of 2021, so that right after spring break when we had more students come back in person. That's about the time too that vaccinations became available for those 18 and over. Masks were required at that time for everyone in indoor settings, including schools. And that's what we filed at District 128 in the summer. This past summer, positivities rates declined, vaccinations also were available. Specifically for our high school students. About that time again, masks were strongly recommended but not required in schools. That was in the summer. In August, then the governor issued orders for masking in all schools. And we aligned our plans to adjust to that state mandate. Moving into the school year, beginning of the school year, our rates were lower. There were then some spikes around November, around Thanksgiving. And again, the governor mask mandate still continued. Public health officials stressed the importance of masking as part of the layered mitigation. Again, we had no changes since the beginning of the year in our COVID response plan in regards to some of the major mitigation. In December, vaccinations became available for younger. Although again, it wasn't high school, it affected, I think, the community. And so we just wanted to add that key date in there. Again, no changes around that time. Which leads us into January. Again, there was a surge in January and coming off of winter break. There was a surge and I'll show that when we get to our data. Quarantine timeline was reduced, decreased from 10 days to five days. And again, we then reflected that culture of care plan, that shortened quarantine length. And instituted that for both students and staff coming back. So instead of being out 10 days, it was the five days. Then I would say about mid-January to February, again, there was a, the rates in the variant declined. And again, you'll see that when we look at the data. Again, public health recommendations, mask mandates continued in school. We had no changes to our plan. February 4th, that Friday, judge ruled on the TRO for students named in the lawsuit to attend school without masks in the quarantine. So those two pieces of lawsuit were in question. On the next day, district administration, we met with our clique, insurance attorney in the lawsuit. So we're represented by a group of school districts. We're all, we're all in same insurance co-op. And so our clique insurance attorney on the lawsuit. Based on the denial Friday on February 4th of the class certification. The attorney said that the judge's ruling only pertains to the named parties in the lawsuit. That was the recommendation of our attorneys in the clique insurance cooperative. Again, no changes in, the, the only change in our culture of care then was continued for all students, except those named in the lawsuit. The clique attorneys decided to appeal. We did not request to be removed. In regards to their appeal, as long as the District 128, we, we remain a named defendant in the case. We're still subject to all orders in the case, regardless of any participation in the appeal process. On a, so there's two pieces in appeal. The district, the school districts have, have appealed, really have nothing to do with the issue that the state, the attorney general has appealed. The districts have appealed, have not focused on the exercise of executive authority or legality of the emergency rules. The districts, school districts have sought to maintain the question of local control. Front and center before the court is the line, the judge drew, the line that the judge drew has implications, not just in this litigation. But in a broader context, by imposing additional legal compliance requirements on school districts. So that's the appeal that the clique, the co-op insurance is appealing, is that piece of it.
I also just want to clarify there, I know some people in the audience may have. Thought that the board members were a part of that conversation and that is not true. That conversation was had among district leadership team administrators and our attorneys over the weekend. And that's what led to that being included in the message that we sent to families on Sunday.
And that was the, February 6th was that Sunday then, that the communication came out that we will continue with the culture of care plan. For all the students except for those named in the lawsuit, again, based off of recommendation, you know, from our legal counsel. February 9th, so that's the middle of the week, the governor announced a lifting of a statewide mask mandate on February 28th. So again, that wasn't with schools, that was with other, you know, places outside of schools. But we thought we would point out that date. Again, our cultural care plan still remains in place. So if we, if we go to some of the data and all this data is on the district website, if you go to COVID-19 reporting. It's all in percentages. I thought it'd be easier to see trends of everything we just kind of discussed. And put it, and put it into a graph. So if I look at the vaccination rates, the top line, if you look at. It's a aqua blue is our staff. Our staff, as you can see from the beginning of the school year, so all the data I'm gonna show you is from the beginning of the school year. Our staff is about 92% vaccinated. Lake County is the bottom line. I thought I would start there next. Is about 50% up to about 62% right now. Again, I think our students, we've asked them to get vaccinated, we asked them to get boosted. And you could see the orange in Libertyville High School students are at 82%. And then Vernon Hills students at 80%. Some of the indicators at the CDC, again, going off their guidance that they've, and thresholds that they've given us is based off of. Total new cases per 100,000 in the past seven days and percentage of. Positive positivity rate, a lot of people call it in the past seven days and they have low, moderate, substantial and high. Again, all of our data sources come from either IDPH, Lake County Health Department, Northwestern Medicine and then our District 128 nurses. I'll, I'll show some of that data. So if you look at our new cases, the seven day, again, going back to the beginning of school year, that's what we've been tracking since the beginning of the school year. Green line is Lake County. 60061 is the blue line and 60048. So you could see that from the beginning of school year, rates were low. It kind of around mid-November, maybe started going up a little bit. And then obviously, the, what we talked about, what I spoke about before is that over the holidays, there was a spike. And then mid-Jan, so we came back later than most schools. We came back January 10th. And there was a higher rate there and then they've come back down. You could see they've come back, come down substantially now. To the, just our most recent data, which I was able to get right on Friday, I think. Our seven-day positivity rate, again, very similar kind of data trend. You could see that it was low. At the beginning of the year, actually October was, was probably our lowest point. Positivity rate spiked up a little bit again after Thanksgiving, spiked after the holidays. But as you could see, what's the trend? The trend is it's coming back down, similar to the other data. One of the other things that we track again daily and weekly, so this is weekly totals. And I just, this is our students, so the number of. So again, this is the number of COVID cases of LHS students and Vernon Hills students. So this is, again, this is on our website, it's, you could see the dashboard. But again, what is the trend? It was very low, spiked after the holidays and now we're coming back down. So it mirrors the county, it mirrors the two communities. So when I went back to that other data, that 60048 and 6061, that was everything. These are just our students and our schools. So you could see, it's pretty much, almost looks like the same graph. Go to the next slide and then, then same thing. So if you look at our LHS staff, that's the one in orange and then our Vernon Hills staff in blue. So again, same trend line, low rates through the school year spike, but now we've come back down here in February. So if you look at all of that data point, they're, they're all very similar. So from the county, 60048, 60061, our students and our staff. So I, I thought it was visually be able to see that. Again, all that data is up on our website. The other thing that, you know, people talking about with getting back into school. And then also looking at masks is the hospital daily admissions or hospitalization rate. So this comes right from the county website. Same thing, rates are low, they spike after the holidays. But again, you could see that the hospital rates are coming back down here in February. So very similar data.
Excuse me, we're not here to dialogue with the audience. You're here to observe us have a meeting, so if you can keep your comments.
Were there any questions from the board on any of the data or kind of background that we've talked about?
Bryant, what the COVID hospitals admissions, when it says 10, is that 10?
So that's 10 admissions per that day is that, so these are daily rates. And so it's the number of admissions per day, COVID-like. So again, I got it from, I got it from Lake County. We haven't tracked this before. But I was trying to show that there is the same very trend line that there was. They spike after the holidays and it's come back down again.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a meeting for the public. You can be sure to, welcome to stick around and listen, but it's our meeting right now. You had your time for public comment.
Should we? Let's continue.
Are there any other questions from the board on the data and metrics portion?
If you want us to continue our meeting, we're gonna have to have quiet.
We're moving through the agenda. Please stop interrupting us.
So again, that, that was the day that we've been sharing since the beginning of the year. And I thought I'd be, put it in a visual so that you could see again where the trends were after the holidays. But again, we're coming back down quite a bit.
If there are no other questions on the data, I'd like to transition to Agenda Item 4. Where we will review our current status and project how we could move our culture of care plan going forward. So you'll see the next steps for our mitigation measures. Our overall goal, as we stated in July and August and continue, is to protect the health of students, teachers and staff. So that in-person learning can reserve, resume and continue as safely as possible. The guiding principle of our district has been to align our coronavirus response plan to public health recommendations. Outlined by CDC, IDPH and ISBE. Next slide. Sir, I'm trying to present our plan. We have some opportunities in the next few weeks where outside variables could impact. Excuse me? The appellate court ruling is expected this week. If the appellate court rules to uphold. If the appellate court rules to uphold the judge's ruling that the mask mandate is not legal only for the listed plaintiffs, then our culture of care plan will continue with masking required for all students except the seven students in the lawsuit. If the appellate court rules to expand the judge's ruling that the mask mandate is not legal for all students, then the culture of care plan will adjust to mask recommended for all students. So that is our general anticipation of how we're gonna proceed this week, according to the appellate court. Next slide. We also know from conversations with Lake County Health Department that they have been in close contact with Illinois Department of Public Health and other agencies, knowing that the metrics are changing and they anticipate changing the guidelines for schools. The timeline is uncertain. If the CDC, IDPH, or LCHD recommends any reduction or removal of masking, we would immediately have our culture of care plan align with that and reduce or remove masking to align with those public health guidelines. So that is one other variable that could change in the next few weeks. Finally, next slide. Bryant noted that in early February, the governor did recognize that the data statewide is decreasing. And that some of our metrics, like transmission rates, are more difficult to rely on because so many people are doing at-home testing. So that's why rates like hospitalizations and some others are gaining traction in terms of being a better indicator. Regardless of the public health or appellate court decisions, we, I am recommending that District 128 follow the Illinois guidance as outlined for other public spaces. If a student or a parent could go to our public library and not have to wear a mask, or to the grocery store and not have to wear a mask, it is our opinion that we also believe that we should have the right for students and staff to have the option to go mask as of February 28th. This is our recommendation. We know, if we can go to the next slide. This is our recommendation to the board for adjustments to our culture of care plan. Why, why do we think this is the right recommendation to bring to you? We have a very high vaccination rate among our students and staff. Our students and staff and whole community have really listened to what we said we needed to open up schools and to keep them open. We also, as Bryant shared, show that we have very low transmission rates. And very low, all of the other rates, everything in parallel is decreasing. And finally, the new metric, we also have declining hospitalization admission rates. Why February 28th? The public health data that we all looked at and that the governor cited shows the data is declining. And that by February 28th, it should be at very low transmission rates. It also is aligned with the other timeline for all other public spaces. And finally, for students and staff who do have any health issues or need any time to prepare for this adjustment, it would give time for any adjustments to things like 504s, IEPs, or any other kind of plans that we would need to continue to keep all students safe. So again, this is the recommendation that I would like to make to the board. And it is now your opportunity to discuss this recommendation. Bryant and I and anyone else are available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, I'll start. I think this is, this is a good plan, I think it's aligning it with the 28th makes sense. The questions I have are if there's a, any change in that plan from the state. Because the governor did say the 28th is his target, but said, you know, pending any possible changes. I don't anticipate that, I think we're gonna see continued good numbers. I think we're gonna see continued decreases in all those metrics that we saw earlier. But if that happens and he decides to do something different, do you recommend that we continue on this path?
Again, our guidance has been to try and closely align with all of the epidemiologists and healthcare experts. This does, this, the recommendation I'm making does represent a change from solely the recommendation for schools to making an adjustment to other, to the public health recommendations for the public in general. But I still would want our actions to be aligned with that. In talking with many of the scientists who work at Lake County, they are also predicting significant decreases to continue. And would put a likelihood of the 28th being recognized by the governor.
Okay, and just from a timeline perspective, we do have a board meeting between now and the 28th.
It's on the 28th.
Oh, it is on the 28th, yeah, that's right. So we'll have an opportunity at that point in time to revisit and confirm and do whatever we, you know, to have an additional conversation there. But the 28th, so that would be a Monday.
Monday to 28th.
So this would, assuming all this goes through, this would take effect Tuesday?
No, Monday to 28th.
It would take effect on Monday, okay. Right, who else has comments, questions?
If I could.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. Can you hear me? Okay. I think one of the problems that we're sitting here today was our lack of plan and our lack of communication. And I don't want to be the scientist, but we've been forced to kind of educate ourselves on this because all of a sudden, what we didn't think we had an option, we do are sitting in a position. And I under, I, I have looked at districts and districts, I've spent countless hours. And the one thing I've come away with is currently, everybody's right and nobody's wrong. And we're kind of sitting in a position of where do we go? I like the, I mean, the plan is showing that we're moving forward. But all of, what I have been learning is there's going to be an ebb and flow in COVID, and it's not going away. Where are our metrics so that we can have transparency? Where is our rubric? What data points are we really using? And where do we be, I mean, because other schools do have that. I would like to see a plan accompanied with some kind of a rubric so that there is some expectancy in the community. If we are three out of four of these data points, then we're moving to mask required. Or we have to have some kind of expectancy for our community of where we are today. And as we see trends, we don't have chaos, which is what we've. I could stand behind our decision because I totally understood there was no reason, with the possibility of a stay, to have that kind of upheaval. But it seems like exactly why we chose that, we are sitting in the exact opposite position and we have chaos. I don't want to see that again. So I don't mind waiting not long, but I want to see metrics so that moving forward, as we see the ebb and flow, that's what I would like to see, that's me, but that's what I would like to see. I, this is not, you know, we know that we're gonna be masked again, and then we're not. Hope not, I, I don't know. But if we have a plan that has flexibility, flexibility and expectancy, our community knows it. As things change, I, I, but we should have expectancy.
Can you go to the next slide?
Hi, I have, this is Sonal, I have two questions. One is with respect to the date. What was the, what were the metrics back before the mandate came when the board voted to keep mask optional? I think it was about 2% positivity rate between today. Starting today, if we end up going back to that level before the 28th, is there a possibility of us going back to mask optional? We'd have to obviously have a special meeting for it. But is that something we want to talk about?
Do you mean tonight?
Not tonight.
I'm unclear what you mean by.
We're not there right now, it's about 8.6%. But it was about 2% when we last voted mask optional. We didn't have nearly as many opportunities for vaccinations back then that we do now. So the situation is slightly better here. So if the number comes back down to 2% or close by, would we still wait till the 28th?
Again, one of the challenges, the transmission rate is difficult because of the testing procedures have changed so much. So that's why right now Illinois Department of Public Health is trying to give different guidance to schools. Exact, they're trying to give exactly what you're asking for. We used to be able to judge healthy versus unhealthy with certain metrics. But because the climate of testing has changed so drastically in the last month or two, there's, they're now needing to pivot to give us different metrics. I will very, as soon as I know what those metrics are, and if they're not available, we will do our best to bring you the most factual ones at the 28th meeting.
Maybe we need to update our guiding principle where it says we'll align our coronavirus response plan to public health recommendations outlined by CDC, IDPH, and ISBE to instead reflect the metrics, as Cara was discussing, our own metrics as well, the things that we've done, vaccination rate, the transmission in schools, things like that, make that part of our guiding principle now. We've transitioned away from, when this was written, CDC and IDPH was, was all we had. But their recommendations haven't really caught up with the facts of the day. So maybe we need to update that guiding principle with something we can all agree on, metrics-wise, so that we do have, if those metrics change and we need to pivot to something, we've updated in, in facts that exist today.
Does Lake County have, the Lake County Health Department have a metric?
No. No, they currently do not. The most recent conversation I had was last Wednesday morning with the public health leaders and all of the superintendents from Lake County, where knowing that some super, and some school districts and boards were saying we need a matrix like this, or we're going to be, all of us school districts will be making our own up individually. And they said, we understand that, we will communicate that, we are working as hard as we can to get a metrics, to get some data to you that is more scientific than you as an individual board can create. So I will continue to be in good communication with Lake County. And hopefully before the 28th, we will have that. If not, we will again compare plans and look at others as you've, as you've outlined, to bring your best next recommendation.
And then the appellate court ruling. My understanding is they have five days to respond, and there was Lincoln's birthday, so that put everything back a day. So it's likely that we'll hear from them by Wednesday?
I believe Wednesday or Thursday, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
We are expecting the appellate court ruling. I believe it's the 17th, so it'll be Thursday or before.
So it sounds to me like there's, there's some consensus for identifying new metrics that we can all agree to, recommended by both the Health Department and us collectively, that we would be interested in using those. And I agree with Cara that as we move forward, and trust me, I want to get rid of these as much as anyone in this room. But as we move forward, if, if this, if this thing spikes up again, let me finish, if this thing does spike up again, because we didn't think it was gonna do what it did in January. And if it does that again, there's some metrics, there's some transparent information that everyone knows that when we reach this point, this is when we have to respond. Otherwise, you know, we've been, it's been a moving target, and I understand it's been a moving target. But I think that type of, you know, coming up with that will put us back in a, in a situation where we can respond and maybe respond a little quicker than what we've been relying on CDC, IDPH, all those groups.
One thing I wanted to add, so I want to make sure I understand our timeline. So if the stay is granted, we're back.
We're sort of past the point of the stay, so they're expecting the appellate court just to rule directly on the appeal?
Okay. And then if not, are we recommending, if the judge does, if the appellate court does issue a stay, will you're recommending that we stay mask recommended?
And can you go back to that slide? From what we've heard from our attorney, they don't expect a stay now, they expect for the appellate court to actually rule.
I didn't understand that, okay, so they're actually gonna rule.
They're actually gonna rule.
Okay. I mean, I understood not wanting to upheaval the procedure if we were just gonna be stint, you know, right back to where we were. But we're expecting a ruling on the merits of the appeal.
Yes, last week we were anticipating a possible stay, so that would have been a potential back and forth. But no, because so much time has passed, they are predicting that it will simply be a ruling body appellate court.
So, and, you know, worst case, best case, whatever you want to say, once that happens, that'll leave us in two weeks from our planned change in operating practices anyway. So I think that'll be, I don't want to call it a moot point, but you know, we have to, we have to respond to that, we have to understand that.
Is it something we can get together, the matrix sooner than the 28th? I mean, I, if we can get our matrix together and we have the data, is it something we have to wait till the 28th? I want to wait for a time, because there is a large portion of our community that is not comfortable with this and may need to be offered the time to get prepared.
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that we are preparing for them also, and we have something for them. And if we can get this done sooner than the 28th, is that something we can do? And I did want to ask with our, is that offering a KN95 to anybody who wishes it? If we go, once we go mask recommended, is that something that we can provide to somebody who wants it?
I know that we have K95s currently available.
We have N95s that we've purchased for, you know, for our staff that, that we can distribute. We are trying to locate more, more, more sources for coming at the end of the month. The hard thing is when, obviously, the recommended, recommendations change for people that were N95, K95, it's hard to find large sources, but we are trying, I know Mark is and Dan is, so that we can hopefully have those available for those that, when we go mask recommended on February 28th, that we could distribute those as much as we can. So we're, we're trying, like I said, we have some now, and then we're looking to see what, what else we can have.
And do we have, I mean, we have the obligation, I understand, to accommodate students that have, and, and teachers that have health considerations, have existing plans in place for whether it's special education student or any other student. And this will give them time to, and, and the district time at the building level to make accommodations for people that need it.
Correct. The other thing about the 28th date, that was a logical target in terms of aligning it with another IDPH recommendation of where the data, they predict the data will be low enough then, that across the whole state, they feel safe to have that lifted in grocery stores and libraries and restaurants and things like that. So we felt that was a good target date to give us enough time to respond for the students who may be more at risk, as well as then be aligned with some other public health benchmark.
Yeah, I, I think that the combination of getting some more clear guidance from the public health experts, as well as balancing our local autonomy and doing what's, doing what's right based on our highly vaccinated population with hospitals that are not in a dire situation, makes sense and is a good roadmap moving forward. That are not in a dire situation makes sense and is a good roadmap moving forward.
Cara?
I, you know, I am curious kind of what our peer districts are doing who are in a similar situation. I'd be curious to hear from both districts that have currently gone mask recommended. And those that maintain their masking policies. I'm interested in hearing about their plans to, for lack of better words, off ramp from masking. And their ideas for metrics and data points needed to determine whether. Unramping again would be necessary. So that would be my question is how can we collaborate with districts that are in a similar position as us? But I think what's key here is Dr. Herman, for us to have a plan that allows for flexibility. And adaptability and responsiveness. We owe it to every stakeholder in our community to provide that transparent communication. When we determine that actions need to be taken. So that's, that's what I will be asking for as you work toward your district plan, how we can, how we can best provide that for every stakeholder.
We do have some summary of data of some of our local schools, Bryant, if you want to share. Again, this, this is up to day because we do know other school boards have been taking action.
Yeah, and I think you had, you know, a couple of questions there, try to answer. So there are other school districts that are still mass required, some are mask optional. And I think still a lot of them are wrestling with those current metrics because they're, the county isn't providing them to us or IDPH. Some of them are working on local metrics. So we can, you know, as we look at some of our metrics to try to. Determine something for District 128, we have resources of other schools that are also doing the same thing as they're looking for. You know, they're off ramp. And again, so there are schools in our area that are mask optional from Antioch and Lakes High School, Grayslake. There are two schools, Lake Forest, Grant, Barrington, Lake Zurich, District 211. Which is five school districts, District 214, which is six school districts. Carmel, some of the ones that are still mass required. Munn line Stevenson, Waukegan, Zion, Nutria, Highland Park, Deerfield. Warren, Glenbrook North and South, Nows North and West, and the main township. School districts are still mask required. Our feeder district, so I, those are just the high schools because I think we're just, you know, when we're looking at, you know. Schools were a little different than some of the, you know, a K5 school or middle school. So looking at those are the high schools, the feeder schools around us. Mask required, it's still District 73, 72, which is round out. And then mask optional District 70 and District 68. So. But that's, you know, some of the schools around us. And again, when we look at our metrics. We can start reaching out to some schools if they're coming up with some rubrics to look at. Because again, we're trying to get stuff from Lake County, it's just. You know, that's the hard thing is trying to get those.
And one, one little thing I think we need to keep in mind also when we're talking about data points are these hospitalization rates that we sometimes look to. Just as, as kind of a. Reminder, if we have forgotten at all about hospitalization rates, they tend to lag about three weeks. So. If that's an indicator we're using, that's going to be a tough one. So that's, it's just something to make a special consideration for.
I think it's essential that we do have some set of metrics to guide us. If we've learned anything. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we made data-driven decisions and I'm committed that we continue. To do that and without metrics to guide us, it doesn't mean that we still don't have that local autonomy, but it gives. Clear expectations of when we can start removing additional layers of mitigation from our culture of care plan. And there will be no surprise if we are forced to bring some back.
I agree.
I'd like to just add a couple of points here. While we are focusing on masking here, there are other mitigations also. Testing and you know, this masking of teachers versus students. I think your metrics ought to keep all of that flexible. I don't know if it needs to be all or nothing, or can you have pieces of it depending on what combination of metrics. Come out, so please consider that the entire range of mitigations, not just masking.
Thank you. We will make sure that it's parallel and that it's clear to students and staff.
And, and one last thing is we need to also have an active communication plan about as things change. They have to be timely. I think in, in the current environment, probably more communication is better than less. I'd like to really see more communication come out as far as how things are going.
I would like to briefly speak to the idea of making a motion. Kevin made a motion two years ago at one of our committee meetings. And I raised a point of order at that time about whether or not it was appropriate. Because committee meetings, we do not, we don't identify to the, our constituents. That we will be taking board action. So Kevin said, I absolutely assure you. This is a completely legal thing. We can do this. He also said graciously, you can also table the motion and then we could wait. And that's what we chose to do is to wait until we had another special meeting where we could actually vote. I agree with Kevin that it is technically. Appropriate, you can raise a motion during a committee meeting. However, I asked Prentice to speak with our lawyers to say. Can you do that? And Prentice said you can, but because our past precedent. Is to always indicate to the community when we will be voting on a topic, it would be easily overturned in court. So I would not be comfortable making a motion. Because I have past practice that indicates to me. That it is not appropriate to do that during a meeting in which we have not told our constituents that we would be voting.
And I would, I would add to that, that I think given the recommendations that we've heard tonight. We're on this off ramp. We're already looking forward to. What we can do to alleviate the, the need to have everyone have face coverings and some of the other things. So I think we're, we're already on that path and we should be there by the 28th, at least with the, the recommendations. So I, I think it would be, it, it wouldn't be necessary to do that to make this, this happen.
I would. Do you think you need to the 20th? I, I understand we need time for a plan. Is it something that can, could we put metrics together and have? Is there a way to push this? Is there a way to push our timeline up?
Timeline for the matrix or timeline to scenes? I, I don't understand the question.
Tonight, I mean, I, I understand we need to prepare, but that's 14 days. Is, if we have our metrics set, do you need? No, I'm not immediate.
Cara, I can't hear you.
I can't.
Please, so we can hear and talk, discuss amongst ourselves.
How much time do you think you need as an administration to set up the metrics? And we can come back together and get. Notification out to our community. And if, if it's the 28th, it's the 28th. I'm asking you, how much time do you think you need?
I think the, the metrics part, we're expecting more information from Lake County or IDPH soon. But in the meantime, we'll be gathering our own. In terms of opportunities for us to respond to staff and student needs. We have been in communication with other school districts who very quickly transitioned. And who now have had some significant staffing issues in terms of. Hard to fill substitute areas such as special education teachers or other things. And so I would ask, that's the kind of time that we need to make sure that as teachers have health plans or students have health plans. That we have the time, we need to make sure that all students are safe as we transition to the mask recommended guidelines.
Lisa, we're circling back to metrics because that's in my brain right now. When previously we'd use the, the COVID dashboard from Northwestern that allows us to get down to zip code. That may be something that we may want to look at as part of our metrics rubric. And then I definitely think that we should have some identification of outbreaks in our schools, like.
Well, that, you mean in addition to the data that's already on our website?
I'm sorry, what?
In, it's, I, it's hard for us to hear each other. It's very echoey. Is, do you mean that?
It's because the speakers are aging that way.
In addition to the data that's already on our website on the COVID dashboard, because I think. What you're asking for is the positivity rates from the Northwestern dashboard.
Not the positivity rates. I'm, I'm just talking about adding that, that to our guiding principle, adding those to.
Oh, to the guiding.
The guiding principle that now we're going to boil this down to more of our metrics.
I under.
I'm looking at that guiding principle as kind of our, our rubric, right? I mean. That's how I'm looking at it. And I'm thinking now it's just too vague to say CDC and IDPH. Like if we could put our.
Local, yeah.
What specific metrics, regardless of whether they come from CDC or IDPH or our own local data?
Right, but they're local, they're local. Yes, thank you.
Right, yeah.
That, that would be what I would like to see on that, is that I think that that would allow us. A path forward for our schools. Specific to our community and recognizing that our community has done the things that. You know, to, to keep themselves safe, they've got themselves vaccinated, they've, you know, we've got the testing in place, we've spent. Good money on ventilating our schools so that the, the air quality is better. We've done the right things. And our numbers are showing it. And now it's time to, to recognize that these students need to. Pay attention to the learning and get back to something that resembles normal.
So, so we.
Denise, Dr. Herman, am I understanding correctly that in order to give equity to all stakeholders in the group. It is in the best interest of the district to wait until, rather to give that two-week window to gather these data points. To come up with a solid plan? Is that what I'm understanding? That provides equity?
Yes, we have students for whom this change will require some significant adjustments in their schooling.
Okay, I thought that's what I understood. Thank you.
And staffing as well. Please, so we can hear each other and, and discuss this, I ask for quiet in the audience.
So the recommendations would go into place on Monday the 28th.
And we would be publishing board packet material the Friday before that. So we would make sure that all of that information would be made available to the board and the public the Friday before that. In terms of communicating the metrics and then the board would have an opportunity to weigh in and see if the metrics that I'll be recommending. Are suitable for what you think the community needs.
Thank you.
And we'll also have some communication later this week based on. The results of the, the appeal. Okay. Sounds like a.
Yeah, I think communication has got to be key in this. I, I, you know, I, I've talked and I, I feel like we missed an opportunity in communicating our reasoning behind. I understood why we were doing it. We had an opportunity to share that reasoning. So as we're moving forward on both sides, our communication. Has to be better.
Well, and I, it seems like with clear indications of if this, then that, and if that, then this.
Well, and something long-term that people can handle, can, people can rely on, right? As things change, something long-term that we can see. If we as a community start to see a trend up, we can rely on that.
But I was addressing the timely communication and because we have. The clear rubric of if this, then that, if this, then that, then having timely communication prepared should be something that is available.
Yeah.
Any more board comments on this particular topic?
I have, I have taught in a classroom with a mask on and it's horrible. It's not good. It's a difficult thing to do. I have also experienced. The loss that is associated with COVID. And I feel that having an appropriate metric is a good idea. I think we have to have a metric. That we can point to, to tell us. But I, I also know, I also feel, I should say. That we are not in a rush. I'm not in a rush to change our current plan. If the governor reduces. The mandate on the 28th and that applies to schools, that two weeks to me is. A step closer to the endemic phase. And I am concerned that we are still in a pandemic, that we need to recognize that we are in a pandemic. And that an endemic is coming. And so I would hope that we are patient. I would hope that we are patient. And that we would continue. To support each other through what is a difficult way to go through education. And so, so much better than the remote learning that we experienced before. So I am glad that our kids are in our building. I am glad that they are in contact with their teachers. I am frustrated that we are masked. I hate the pandemic, but I also am patient.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? Okay, we will move on to. Let's see, what's next? Item number five, board documents management software.
Yes, so this item is actually related to the documents that we're looking at right now. Currently, we use a series of Google Docs to organize all of our board materials.
Do we need a motion?
Thank you for coming everybody and, but please be quiet as you leave. Let's take a recess.
Yeah.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're back. Thank you. And for those sticking around in the audience, I appreciate your patience and your stamina out there. We're going to move on with our agenda so we can get through the P and P rather quickly for the rest of the items. And then we have another meeting to do. So right now we are at the board document management software.
Yeah, this is a preview of a. Recommendation that we'll have that will be coming to the February February twenty eighth meeting. This is a tool that will help us manage all of our board documents. Right now we use Google Docs. And as you see, we have our agenda and then we have about eighteen to twenty Google Docs. That it's difficult for us when we're in a meeting, but it's even more difficult for public. To know which Google Doc goes with which particular item. So in an attempt to try and improve our own communication and our transparency to the public. We are recommending that we move forward as many districts in the area already use board docs. And one of the things that we're very excited about is for each agenda item, it will say if it's action or not. It will also say if there's any policy relations, what those are, but also say if there's any budget implications, what those are. So it's a very nice structured way to make sure we understand everything that's before us and that the public understands everything before us. So we're very excited about this and you'll see it on the agenda.
Do we pay a price for Google Docs? Do we subscribe to that or is that just free? Because it seems a little pricey.
The only thing you pay is just archiving for Google, but that's really Gmail, but other than that Google is no cost.
I was able to sit in on the demo. And I was incredibly impressed with the capabilities that Board Docs gives. Not only us to see all the documents, but the public better access. It makes it much more clear. What we're looking at when we're having our discussions. It it's a significant level up from the procedures that we have here and from the other districts that are already using it. They can't imagine going back to any other way of board governance because it really helps. Make it clear for much easier for the board to follow the agenda and the related documents. It makes it much easier for the public.
I've been frustrated with the being able to access documents during board meetings, which is why. I use my own computer, download all the documents so that I have them. I don't have to wait. So good.
Yeah, I will say just from my own personal experience, I've worked in or with. A number of organizations that have boards that are public education organizations. And have managed technology groups supporting both the use of like a Google Docs kind of thing. Or this kind of system. And this is far superior. It just gives you so much clearer access. To what the documents are and especially like, like you're saying, Lisa, for the. For the public to be able to really have better access and more understandable access to be able to. We drew what can be quite a bit of materials.
Is this what your district that you work in uses?
We use a similar product, yeah.
The other thing that I would consider doing is being able to connect the output of this to the actual calendar we have in the school. Because I can't tell you how many people have asked me just in the last few days, how do I find the Zoom link? And it it was buried like three levels below. Some of these things, we just have to make it easy for people to find.
So this does have that ability to have that be. On the front page of what will be our new board meeting. Platform. So how to watch the Zoom link, what the upcoming dates are, what the previous minutes are. It's very user friendly for the public.
And can we tie that to the actual calendar we have for District one twenty eight? On our website.
To have which link to the calendar?
Are you talking about the year at a glance? Right. I mean, that is as a as a parent.
Yep.
It's buried. It's not user friendly. When you just want to look quick here at a glance, you have to do three steps. And I know it's on there. It's just not, I find it difficult.
Yeah, we appreciate that feedback. Mary and I can work with our webmaster and make some of those adjustments immediately.
Yep. So anything that we are discussing like today, I would envision we go to Feb fourteenth, two thousand twenty two. And I can tomorrow see the entire meeting packet there. If I were to go to the twenty eighth, I'll see the Zoom link there and agenda there. That's exactly what we'll be.
Other comments?
I it was an aside, forget it.
Okay, anybody?
We did investigate a similar vendor and the price is very, very, they're. Yeah, change of each other.
So is this an annual maintenance, but it's we have to renew it every year? Or would they give us a discount if you like signed a, I don't know, five year term or something like that?
We did not investigate a multi-year until we thought we got direction from all of you. I can ask, but I don't think there was a multi-year pricing discount for this particular service that I can inquire about.
It's a good question. I asked the same thing. So we didn't, we didn't receive that. I know that when we asked for a couple of changes to the contract, it was quite a lengthy thing with their legal to change it. So hopefully they can get back to us with an answer about whether or not a multi-year contract is available. Not only from a pricing standpoint, but the longer you use it, the more historically rich it becomes. It like builds as a historical record in a very easy to navigate sort of way. So I would anticipate that because we would want to continue using it to make it sort of more. Robust, that that's a great question to see if that if that's available.
And the other, because the other things, you know, I I do software contracts all the time at work. Things you want to also look at is protecting your service level agreements.
Yes.
Making sure the site is up and running at a certain time. What happens if some there's an outage? You don't want to negotiate this every year. So I I'd say even if it takes a little longer for legal to get through the process, it might be worthwhile to do.
Other question, Kamal? This is to your point, Lisa, this is one of those, you you don't change this kind of system every year. Once you start building that, it becomes so valuable because it's on all in one repository and searchable. And it also, these things also provide a much higher level of of safety and security for data that should be kept secure. And for the, you know, from a privacy perspective and all those kinds of things. Far more than, you know, you you have to jump through some hoops to make that happen in in another system. But this is built designed to do that, to protect information in closed session minutes and and meeting information and stuff. So it's a, it's a really valuable tool.
I'm sorry, I just remembered one other thing is also look for price protection. So you don't want next year they come back and say it's twenty thousand.
Good point. Okay, anything else on that one? Moving on to superintendent evaluation online platform, I'm interested in hearing about this one.
Yes, so currently the practice for evaluating the superintendents in our district. Is again much more narrative and not using necessarily state or national recommended guidelines. For superintendents or educational leaders. And so as I approach needing to receive my evaluation from all of you for this year's work. I want to make sure that we're adjusting so that it our practices are aligned. So that I'm getting the feedback that I need based on all of the standards that I'm being held to. So Lisa and I met with a vendor that comes very highly recommended from some of the area superintendents. Who've been using this tool for about the last eighteen months. I'm going to let Lisa describe it more. But we're pleased that it could be something very useful for both you giving me feedback and me receiving feedback.
Yeah, I think, you know, coming from a time where our board president would solicit feedback. From board members and compile a word document. This gives us the opportunity to check in more frequently, to set and adjust goals. As well as collaborate to provide feedback and share that feedback with each other. It is a significant level up from what we've been doing. And it also gives the opportunity for it to be used with the district leadership team. So that our performance reviews are consistent. That's important, not just from a legal standpoint, but it's really important that people get timely and specific feedback. And this is a way to document it in a very user friendly way.
Is there, the pricing is just for the superintendent? Do we have?
We also included.
We we did include in this sample, adding the district administrators also to this. But we actually have started another protocol, so I would want to start the district administrators on July one, twenty twenty two. With their cycle in terms of the kind of process that we're using. So but Lisa and I felt it would be very helpful to start using some of these tools this spring. As the way to gather feedback from each of you. And then in terms of goal setting. Once we have our strategic plan and other things in place, it will be the perfect dovetail for us to then fully use the whole annual cycle. Starting in in July when we do our annual work.
Is this similar to frontline? Are you familiar with frontline? It's just an evaluation tool. It allows you to put all of your.
Yes, it is. It would be for me to put all my archives. So again, it 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 allows me to report to you. What I'm doing as evidence of reaching the goals that we agreed upon.
So you plug in your goals.
Yep, I do a self assessment.
Great.
I, you give me, there's a mid-year check. Or again, I need to show you what I've been doing to reach the goals that we've set mid-year. You can give me feedback then as you can in time, but it's a more formal way to do it then. And then the end of the year summit.
Yeah, I think it would be a similar product, but that's geared towards. Features and certified staff that have specific requirements. So this would be an administrative version of that.
Yeah, I I also think this goes a long way towards recognizing that hiring and. As a board in terms of board governance, this is one of our. Primary responsibilities is to hire and maintain a superintendent. And I think this goes a very long way to helping us do our jobs.
We have nothing to compare it to, so I'm looking forward.
Well, it's actually a relatively new, I've not seen a product like this.
It's more, it's being used at several districts in New York because we asked about that. Denise, did you remember more than that? It was very, it's becoming commonly known in. New York school districts, public school districts, because we try to, you know, compare apples to apples. Did you recall the other districts that might?
Well, the the superintendents that I've met with in Lake County, Lake Bluff is using this. I think Mundeline Superintendent is using this. I think the Round Lake Superintendent is using this. But it just sort of was launched here in Illinois last year. So the the people who have started using it are raving about it. I know during the school board conference, I attended a session on, you know, trying to align your practices to state standards. And goal setting. This product does what this district was saying they wanted to do. It provides all the structure for more districts to be able to do that well.
It should provide a much more subjective. View.
So everything I said about the other software product.
You know, you know, you know.
The only other thing that you might want to consider here is, you know, more more attention to privacy and security. Because you are talking about personnel and performance versus the other one is more for public use. So you want to pay attention to where is this data hosted? What kind of security and privacy controls they have on it? Are they selling it to anyone? Are they shipping it outside the United States? All of that, you know, got to think about those things.
Thank you. I know Mick Torres, our Director of Technology, has a very good eye and he reviews all of our technology contracts. So we will make sure he does a once over on both of these.
This is one of those, as I review these kinds of things, I look to the new SOBOL law that is in effect in Illinois. That's more specific to student data. But I also looked through that same lens and use some of those same sort of concepts of how to look at. These systems that contain adult data, contain employee data, that contain, you know, that that type of thing. So I think it's a, yeah, it would be, would be the appropriate person to review all that.
And Temple Murphy, who also works in that department, is is really the one really dives into the security. So, you know, for all of our systems, again, we have a lot of computer systems, you know, different data. And so, you know, Temple is constantly working on that to keep student data, staff data and all the, all that safe.
Important. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, we have a group of personnel items. Anyone have any? Comments or questions related to those at this point?
Yeah, what's a SEL interventionist and is this a new position?
So the SEL interventionist was two new positions for the second semester. In using our ESER funds to hire staff to be able to, you know, help our students at both schools. We were lucky enough to be able to find two people available at both of our schools and get them started and and working with our students. So they are, it's it's for the this year, you know, this semester till the end of the year. And then we could just reevaluate and see where we go from there.
And what's their goal? What are they doing?
So, you know, obviously our, you know, school counselors, our social workers, our psychologists. Are really maxed out with the students and trying to help our students. And so they want to be able to help intervene in our LSTs and really be able to work with our students that are, you know, having the social emotional. Learning, similar to what we're doing with our math interventionist at Larryville and to some of the things that we put in place at the ARC. that Larry Bill and to some of the things that we put in place at the ARC, the the Resource Center at Vernon Hills. So academic needs, but also the social emotional learning needs. And again, you know, we're using ESSER funds available to be able to do that. And we thought we identified those needs in talking to our schools. So, you know, both schools identified the need for the SEL interventionist, but then there were some other needs in the schools. Again, that we were able to do and get in place right away.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, I was going to say, if ever I did see an excellent use of ESSER funds. It just aligns so beautifully, but that's super exciting to have these additions in our schools. And I know they will go to excellent use by our students.
These are not FTE positions, though, they're.
They're not FTE positions, they're just, they're just for this year, temporary. Temporary, yeah.
So they're not permanent. Will it, and forgive me if you don't have this information, but will it potentially be reevaluated at the end of the school year or over the summer if these positions? You know, there is a need to maintain these types of positions.
Yeah, I think our goal is to evaluate, you know, all of that, you know, mid semester, you know. And we get towards staffing time in March and we can look at those. And but, and it's something that we can wait till the end of the school year and just determine what we want to do.
Thank you.
And you would be able to use ESSER funds next year for these positions? No?
Unlike other schools in the area who have received millions of dollars of ESSER funds, we have not. And so we are using the money allotted this year for this year's students.
So that evaluation be important. But I think, you know, to Kara's point, if it's a valuable resource, I think we should definitely consider the results of that.
And we'll have almost a whole semester of data of the impact that they've had on the students that they've worked with to determine how we want to move forward for the next school year.
Okay, any other questions on that, on the personnel items? We'll move on to board policies. We have a group here for second reading. Any comments on these? Either from the board or from?
I have some commentary on three items that I apologize for not seeing sooner, but I assume this is what second readings are precisely for. I read again and again and again. And so here is my question. Policy six sixty curriculum content, and I believe I brought this up before at a P S meeting. And I apologize, but just as a reminder, is there curricular content or inclusion for regarding the history struggles and contributions of Native Americans?
I can answer that. These, the the groups listed in this policy are those that are mandated and named in statute. Because Native Americans are not listed, it doesn't mean they are not taught in our curriculum. So they are a group that is not named in the statute, but many of our courses include the study of Native Americans as non-mandated. And I choose to include that that history.
And perhaps that's what included but not limited to alludes to. Okay, thank you. Policy seven ten, I'm sorry, I didn't write the title of the policy.
Equal education opportunities.
Yes, there's a line, I am looking at my notes, so I don't have the policy in front of me. So, but I put it in quotations, no student shall on the basis of A, B, C, D, all of these, you know, identifiers, be denied equal access to programs, et cetera. Should we state building facilities as well? So there were a number of things listed, but actual facilities within the building. I was just wondering if you have to specify, if it's smart to specify.
I can check on that. So I think so up above in the paragraph above, no, that's something else. I will, because it really just says, nothing shall on the basis of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity be denied equal access to programs, activities, services or benefits or be limited in the exercise of any right privilege advantage or denied equal access to educational extracurricular programs and activities. I think it's implied, but I can check on if we need to include anything about it.
If they have equal access to all those activities, can you think of an example of how they could not be equal access to the facility?
Presumably. I wonder sometimes if more specificity is better than less, but I I asked the experts to weigh in, I suppose.
I can, I I'll look that up. I I can check on that, though.
Okay, and then finally, policy seven to ten.
Expulsion procedures?
Expulsion procedures. I just want to make sure I'm I'm almost there. There we go. List the students prior suspension. So on one D, it says the request shall list the students prior suspension or suspensions. So my question is, well, I found the wording confusing. Do you need to indicate if applicable? And the reason I find it confusing is because as a parent, I would then ask myself, well, can expulsions happen without prior suspensions? Does that make sense? Do you need suspensions to build to an expulsion? There may be an understanding.
Typically, yes, but there are a few things in school code for which, when they happen, they can be immediately expelled. But those are very clearly outlined. Others do require students to have feedback.
Period mitigations.
So my only question is, do we want to be specific in saying list the students prior suspension slash suspensions? If applicable.
I will have to look this one up because a lot of times with this one, we don't stray from what the exact wording is. But I can look that up and get back, and get back to you on that one, too.
Dan, I hope I'm not stealing your policy thunder.
I don't even know who you are.
I learn from the best.
I don't know what.
I I am okay with you guys asking these questions, though. It does help educate, it helps to educate all of us on.
It's also funny what you find on subsequent readings.
Yeah, that's why we do it twice.
Yeah, I like it.
Policy six fifty, school wellness. I asked Bryant about this and he said they're working on it. It's a new section that says that we will develop a food sharing plan for unused food that is focused on needy students. And I just wondered, oh, where is that? And it's, we're working on it because it's new, right?
It's brand new. So Dan will reach out to Chart Wells and communicate with them and.
So I'm intrigued by that. And then the other one is also six fifty under community involvement. It said the board and superintendent will actively invite suggestions and comments concerning the development implementation. And that was the only change was that they added the word actively. So what, what happened that?
So I I don't know why they worded it, added the word actively. But in reading through some of the background on this policy, it says that seeking community input or involvement during the policy's adoption and any monitoring phases and inviting suggestions and comments to the public comment aligns with this. So because we're doing a first reading and a second reading, and then also because we do review the sections, that that really satisfies that. But it is interesting that press decided to act, you know, add the word actively.
Yeah, like we weren't doing enough somehow.
And it could have been feedback that they were getting, you know, from other school districts, you know, over time.
And and just in an effort to, you know, move things along, because Jim is going to get the record for the longest committee meeting ever. Thank you. I will relinquish my time.
Right, a lot of these changes are as a result of some of the new laws that were passed, correct?
So either new laws that were passed or also some of their five-year reviews that the press policy does. So, and sometimes you'll see, like, they change one word in a five-year review. And I I don't know why they do that. It's just different language. But at the same time, it's not a bad thing because then it does come before the boards and you guys do get a chance to read through them. So some of them, you look at, you're like, they just, all they did was take a word and they, you know. You know, change Illinois to ILL or something, you know, and, but it's okay because then I think it gives the boards to a chance to look at them, so.
Yeah, just to give the public an idea of what the process is and why we we undergo this. We don't just pick them at random. We we have a process to review all of our policies.
Okay, any other? Donna has set the bar high, you know, striving to achieve. Okay, so those will be up for second reading and adoption. So that'll be a motion at the board meeting in two weeks. Review of committee summary from January. Any questions or comments about that? No corrections there. We got future agenda items, annual staffing report to look forward to.
Yeah, so in, you know, right now the students are selecting their courses, finishing up with that. And then we start working on sectioning with the, you know, again, the sectioning is all based off of the student, what they choose, the the classes. So the buildings will work on sectioning and then we all work collectively as a team, all of us. You know, from the principals, Rita, Dan, myself, Kelly Hartwig, we all meet, we look at the district sectioning. And then from there, the classes then determine, you know, our staffing, you know, for next year. And so then we do bring the staff report. And I know we have some board members that were not through staffing before. And so when we come in March, I'll kind of go through that whole process of, you know, when you have from non-tenure teachers to part-time teachers and the legal proceeding proceedings that we have to do. The other reason it's in March, there is a, you have to go backwards from your end date of school. And you have to make, you have to make all your decisions on staffing by a certain date. So it has to be done at the March board meeting. We can't go into April because now it's, so to give notice to people that are, you know, part-time or non-tenured being released. So, but there is a little bit of, you know, but that'll come up in committee meetings in March. And then you'll take action on personnel in March.
I do have one additional future item that I'd like to consider for next month's committee meeting. And that is, as we sort of approached this off-ramp, we we put in place the process of accepting public comment via email a couple of years back because we couldn't meet in person. We had to have some opportunity for the public to to comment. So I'm just saying we should, that's maybe something we should visit at next month's meeting. I'm not saying I want to get rid of it or, you know, but I think it's something that with the mitigations being, you know, continually reduced and us moving into hopefully a bit more normal environment.
It's a good question.
Yeah, it's a timely discussion.
Forward thinking.
Other than that, any other future agenda items? Did you want to take a break before the next?
I'm good, I can keep moving.
Okay, I'll close this meeting during the program and personnel committee meeting and.
All right, I'm going to call to order the facilities and finance meeting from Monday, February fourteenth. Is there, I'm going to start with public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? All right, Mary, any email comments for facilities and finance? All right, the agenda is as follows. We're going to review the January committee minutes. The fiscal year twenty one annual comprehensive financial report will be presented. Capital projects update, the fiscal year twenty two mid-year financial review. I will also be discussing the energy audit, which I'm very much looking forward to hearing. And an update on that. And then we'll go through some bids and contracts that will be up for votes at the February twenty eighth meeting. And then discuss some upcoming bids and contracts. No disposal of obsolete equipment and future agenda items, and then we will adjourn. So let's start with review of January committee minutes. Any comments? Okay, moving on to the fiscal year twenty twenty one annual comprehensive financial report.
All right, give me one second here. So we have a buddy here who stuck it out. Everyone, I don't believe any of you have yet had the pleasure to meet in person. The managing partner for our audit, this is Betsy. Welcome. No, yeah, sorry. This is from Miller Cooper. She is here to talk about our fiscal year twenty one financial report. So again, Betsy Allen from Miller Cooper. I'm going to put this up on the big screen so y'all can see. And she's going to kind of walk through. So the big picture, we got our annual financial reports, but we've never really brought, brought them out here. And we thought it'd be a good idea to bring, but yeah, she's, she does this for multiple clients and thought it'd be a good, good thing to kind of provide that. I don't know, another perspective, that's not just me talking all the time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Betsy.
Thank you.
Dan, just make sure that's on her. Is this okay? So as Dan said, this is.
I'm sorry, I didn't put this, I didn't share my screen with Zoom.
As Dan said, you know, this is the first time I've come out to meet with the board, so thank you for your committee. So thank you for having me. I tried to put this a short presentation together to sort of explain the audit and what, you know, not to go through every page of the hundred and some page audit. You know, the numbers were the numbers at June thirtieth that you've looked at. So I was really just sort of going to go over what's, you know, what's in the annual comprehensive financial report. Try to get through it quickly. I know you guys have a lot going on, but please answer, let me know if you have any questions as I'm starting to go through this. So the first item on here is, you know, why do you even have an audit? You know, each school district in the state of Illinois is required to have an annual audit, you know, by a public accounting firm. And the Illinois State Board of Education also requires you to have your audit done in accordance with government auditing standards. And also realize too that an auditor has to be independent of the district. And the object, the main objective of our audit is to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free of material misstatement in order for us to provide an opinion through our audit procedures and inquiries that we do of the district. So this slide shows you this sort of a short summary of the services that we provide. And like I said on the last slide, you know, the main, the main objective of our audit is to express an opinion on the twenty twenty one financial statements. We do assist the district with drafting the financial statements, which we call that is a non-audit service. But mainly the part of the financial statement that is ours is our opinion that we have issued. And we would also issue, which we did not issue this year, our internal control communication, our controlled deficiency letter, we refer to it as. And here we would provide any recommendations on internal control we found, or if there's anything for improvements that the district needed to be to be doing in future years.
I'm sorry, did you say you did not include that in this year?
We did not have to issue a controlled deficiency letter this year, yes.
Thank you. I just want a little clarification on that.
Oh, I have another slide.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Thank you for reading.
But we did not issue a controlled deficiency letter. I mean, we didn't have any, we did, we did have one recommendation that I'll look at. But since it was only a management advice, we put that in our required communication to the board letter. We did not have any controlled deficiencies to report to the board, so that's why we did not issue a controlled deficiency.
Which is a good thing.
Correct.
Thank you. That's what the clarification I was trying to get.
And then lastly, our professional standards require us to issue what we call our required communication to the board letter, which we'll look at a few items in the upcoming slide. So after we finish all of our audit procedures, you know, through.
So after we finish all of our audit procedures, you know, through, you know, all our substantive testing, analytical procedures, inquiries that we do, these are the documents that we issue. The first one is the annual comprehensive financial report. You will see, I think, in your agenda, and I think Dan, you called it too, the comprehensive annual financial report, which it was always called until this past year. So that is not a transposition. They did change the name to annual comprehensive financial report due to the abbreviation of the other term not being a nice term used somewhere. So there was a whole Gatsby statement to change the name of the report this year. There's also an annual financial report considered on the regulatory basis. It's filed with the Illinois State Board of Education. The district also had a single audit this year because they did expend over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal funds. So we issued our single audit opinion. As I said before, ISB requires you to do the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So we also issue that opinion along with our required communication to the board. Another item within the audit that's important for districts to look at sometimes within the annual financial report that's filed with the State Board of Education, there is an estimated financial profile score that you will see. And do realize this is estimated till it's finalized by ISB. This is just sort of a take, a takeout of what the form looks like within the annual financial report. And the district currently does have an estimated recognition of a four-point-O, which is fours are the highest score you can get in each of those categories. So as I said, just to point out here, some things that help you sort of understand what's in, what's in the annual comprehensive financial report. This report is divided into three sections. There's introductory section, and I've just sort of listed under there sort of what's in each of those sections. What's we'll look at more in depth. There's a financial section and also a statistical section. So within your introductory section, you will have a transmittal letter that's prepared by the district, an organizational chart, a list of your officers and officials. And then there's also the certificate of excellent and financial reporting that you get from the Association of School Business Officials International. And also the certificate of achievement for excellent financial reporting for the Government Finance Officers Association. So each year, the district does submit their report to these, to these entities who who has reviewers look at them and then issue these, these awards to the district. And then within the financial section of the report, you have the independent auditor's report. I tried to just put the beginning page numbers on there if you want to go look at the information. And there's also a management's discussion and analysis. I always tell boards that I meet with and committees that if you don't want to read the whole, whole report, that management discussion analysis is a great part of the document to go to. It's just, it has some summary of financial highlights of the district. It has some condensed financial statements. It also reports on brief overview and description of the statements with the statements that are within the report. And it also has a section on items that could have some financial effect on the district in the future. Then the next part of the financial section are the, are the basic financial statements. And here we have the government-wide and fund financial statements with some reconciliations between the, showing the different bases of accounting and also the footnotes that talk a lot about the accounting policies and give more detailed information from the basic financial statements. Within those notes to financial statements, there's also a lot of information on the pension liabilities for TRS and THIS, and also the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits. And I am sorry, I forgot as part of the pension benefits. So there's many, many, many footnote pages of pension and OPEB liabilities. And then the final sections of the financial section are the required supplementary information and then the supplementary financial information. And then just a few things that are important to point out, I think, within the financial section. Our independent auditor's report was an unmodified opinion, which is a highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. I do want to point out, if you happen to look at it, there is an emphasis of a matter paragraph in the in the independent audit report, and this was only due to the implementation of Gatsby, which is the governmental accounting standards board. Statement eighty-four was the fiduciary activities, which there was a reporting change of where those needed to be reported. But do realize our opinion is not modified for this, as it was just a change in accounting principle. This slide. Keep going. Oh, sorry. I thought I gave you a wrong slide or something. We won't really spend a lot of time on this, but for, you know, you're counting geeks as we call ourselves, I guess.
I think it's great.
The, as we talked about in the basic financial statement, you have the government-wide statements and the fund financial statements. So this just sort of lists some of the differences, you know, the basis of accounting, you know, what the statements are trying to report. As a district, when you're getting your, you know, monthly financials from, from the business office to look at, you're really seeing more of the fund financial statements is what you'd be more, more used to looking at. So like I said, this slide's really just trying to, you know, give you a snapshot of the differences between the two types of statements.
And Dan, you know what we say in our district?
Pardon me?
You know what we say in our district? Dan puts the fun in fund accounting.
Oh, yes. I've had a few great meetings with Dan, and he has his great big board up and puts everything up there and. And so then the last section of, of the, of the report is the statistical section. This is where there's some schedules that contain detailed information. Most of them are ten-year trend schedules. And I've listed the different five areas that have to be reported within the statistical section. And a lot of boards, administrations and that like to look at these because they are trend schedules that have ten years of information. So then, as I stated earlier, we do have to issue our required communication to the board letter, which is required by the standards. Again, we did perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and the uniform guidance, which is the single audit. The letter also contains pages of future and current accounting pronouncements by Gatsby. And again, Gatsby is the governmental accounting standards board. We did, like we already mentioned, implement Gatsby eighty-four this past year, which requires certain activities to be reported within the, the general educational fund. It also, I didn't list all the, the upcoming Gatsby statements, but within the letter that you have, it lists all the. There's many more coming in different years. The big one that's coming up this year is in regards to leases and lease accounting. So we will start working with the district to ensure that we properly implement that statement in the upcoming year. There's also, if you read the letter, management was very prepared for the audit. I just want to thank Dan and his entire staff for all their help during the audit to help it be done efficiently and timely. Management did sign a representation letter to us when we did release the deliverables. There were no significant adjusting entries, no misstatements. And here is where I said, you know, we did not issue a controlled deficiency letter, but we did include wanted management advice in regard to technology and data security risk. If you read it within our letter, this is a comment that we do put in all of our clients' letters. You guys were having some discussion tonight about, you know, getting board docs and the superintendent evaluation. And it's really just a reminder to always remember to be assessing and looking at the technology, especially with a lot, a lot of the remote different remote stuff that's been going on too. So don't, please don't take it as there's anything wrong with your technology. This is really just an advice that we give to all of our clients, just to remember to be constantly watching, watching for that. And then lastly, as I said, we did not issue a controlled deficiency letter this year. The slide is just sort of telling you the three levels of a deficiency, if you had one. And that our recommendation is within our required communication letter. And then if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer them. And on the last slide, I also left my contact information, and you can always get hold of Dan if anyone had any further questions.
Dan, I have one question. When it says days cash on hand, can you just do a little refresher why that's important to have those fund balances?
Yeah, so what, one of the things that ISB looks at, when they're trying to gauge financial strength, is they want to know basically at the end of the year, how many days cash on hand? So they essentially take, they, they take the cash you have on hand, and then they calculate a daily expenditure essentially. And so then they'll divide, all right, how much cash versus what would be a daily expenditure for you? And they figure out how many days. The way they rate it is anything that is a hundred and eighty days or above is rated a four, the strongest rating. Anything less than that gets tiered down relatively. So essentially what ISB is saying, what they really want to see is at least six months cash on hand at the end of the fiscal year, which is not necessarily the same thing as fund balance, but for our district, it's pretty close.
And ours is three-seventy.
I really look at it because I see the formulas. It's, it's a, it's all formulated through the state annual financial report. So it's really not numbers that we're, the only numbers we're inputting are the number, are the numbers or linking them that showed the total expenditures, revenues and expend, you know, and assets. So this is really all calculated by formulas within ISB's state annual financial report.
Right. It's an organization independent of our district that's setting up the framework. And we are inputting our numbers within it to show that we are within the guidelines. We exceed the guidelines.
And it's, and it's calculated for every district in the state of Illinois. And there's, there's four different ratings of it. There's recognition, I wrote these down, I always forget, recognition, review, early warning and watch. And so each district will get a ranking based on their, based on their score.
And is there some type of remediation or penalty depending on the rating, or is it just a guideline?
I think it's more, my understanding is it's more a guideline.
If you get.
If you get closer to watch, sometimes, I mean, sometimes ISB will send in an oversight board. There's been, I know a district one time that asked for a financial oversight panel, you know, just because they knew they were getting on the brink of that. But it, there are some financial oversight panels that are there due to where their rankings have been and that ISB says we're coming in and you're going to have a financial oversight panel.
One example of that is North Chicago, for example, had been under a financial oversight for a very long time.
And it's not a secret who those districts are. If you, if you get on the ISB website and look this up, it lists who, who, who the financial oversight panel is and who has one.
Thank you. But going through this process holds us accountable. You know, going through this process, getting this information and getting it out in the public is part of the accountability process, so. Thank you for your work on this.
Anybody else have questions? Dan, anything else? Is this something we'll vote on? Refresh my memory on that.
Yeah, we usually vote to accept it at the February meeting.
It's getting late, sorry. My brain is not, I'm trying to remember from last year. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us and for being so patient.
All right, moving on to capital projects update.
One, one.
Who wants it? Sounds like a lightsaber.
It's the interaction. It's like cell signal.
Lightsaber.
Yes.
The mom of a boy.
Yeah, so the Vernon, the Vernon Hills, I included the report there. We have crossed every T and dotted every I. And I'm really excited. The final cost for the project that feels like we completed like a year and a half ago. But as I told you, the, the final payments, all that has to get worked out. And things weren't looking so great, but I knew, I knew thing. Sorry, at the end of a project goes with credits and more charges as you're trying to finalize this out. And our final cost for the project ended up at thirty million, five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, eighty-four dollars. The estimated cost that we were sitting at was thirty million, five-hundred-and-thirty thousand, nine-twenty-seven, which means we came, the final cost for the project came in about a hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents over what we estimated. Now, just a reminder, for those of you, some of you weren't on the board when this project started. Our original estimate was thirty million, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. But as we progressed through the project, I knew that we had under, we had underestimated for FFE, particularly like tech equipment and stuff. So we added thirty, three-hundred thousand to the project. But even with that, and I think that was done since the board, since you all have been on the board. But since then, we came in and, you know, I'd always want to be like under if I can, but being over by a hundred and fifty-nine, a hundred and fifty-seven dollars is really exciting. Yeah, 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 de minimis would be a good word. But, but that, that's a credit to, that truly is a credit to Mark, that is a credit to Gilbane for doing what we're paying them to do is to help get us the project we want at the cost that we thought we would pay, so.
The comment I'll make on that is that Gilbane seems to be has in the past shocked us at points in time with some unexpected.
Yes.
I don't know, change orders, whatever it might be. But they've always come through with really trying to get to the bottom of it and rectifying the.
Yes, we, so we have been through now two major capital projects. The first one, twenty-one million, this one, thirty million. Both projects, we had a scare, if you will, of wow, these are a lot of changes. And really Gilbane kind of said, I think it'll work out. And me saying like, no, you got to show me it's going to work out. And it ends up working out. So that, that's, that's very exciting because, you know, we don't want to overpay for it.
I think that's a testament to the good working relationship you guys have with Gilbane and them knowing our district well enough and Mark, you working closely with them. So thank you. That's, you can't ask for anything better than that.
I don't want to leave Mark out too. He's, does a great job.
Yeah, congratulations again. It can't be overstated how much we value that not only did they come in in budget, but they came in in the time that we thought that we could get these improvements so that our students could be using them. And for that, I, I can't thank you and Mark enough, Dan. Thank you.
I'm a little sad. This has been a line item on facilities and finance since I've been on the board, and this will be it. Well done.
Any other questions? Moving on to the field house.
There, there's really not enough to deal with. We're wrapping up the final cost for that one as well. That one's a much smaller project, much easier. That's not going to take years to settle out. So we'll get that within the next couple of months.
Okay.
But that project, I'm sure will come on the underestimate.
I'm also going to note how grateful I am that, just as a matter of luck, these projects were completed before supply chain issues really got as bad as they are right now. I know that, you know, Mark, you got out ahead of a couple of things and ordered them and had them waiting so that we wouldn't face any supply chain or cost issues. And I'm grateful for that. And I'm also very grateful that we're not starting these projects now.
This, I'm, I'm not asking for firm numbers on this, but it might be interesting just for the public to see. Had we, had you not had that forward thinking, what that would have cost us? If you could estimate that in any way, I wouldn't hold you to those numbers. I just kind of want to demonstrate that there was some real due diligence that went into this, that, that saved the taxpayers' money. And this was not a project that we would have had a choice to do. And I appreciate that.
We can, we can, we can talk. Just opportunity than dollars, but let us talk a little bit.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Shall we move on to mid-year twenty-twenty-two financial review?
So I know it's late and I know it's been long. I do though want to make sure you have some very important information in front of you and I've at least reviewed some portions of it with you here. So you have my written report. You can read it, but there's a few highlights that I really want to point out. Really, it's always a question, as you progress through the year, how are we doing? How are we doing? And so I give you data and it's really basic and generalized. But the, the mid-years are a great opportunity to dig deep and to say, okay, really, really, how is everything going very detailed? And unfortunately, I just don't have the time to do a very big detail every single month, nor would that be very helpful. Because to be honest, the first quarter, we don't, we don't hardly spend much money because of teacher salaries and stuff like that, not really kicking it into August. So really, December is an ideal time to really see how, how is things every, how are things actually happening? And I'll tell you, there's a few things that I still can't tell yet, but there's a lot of things I can tell what's going on. So I'm just going to review a few high points. I would say revenue, so on the, on the, on the revenue side, overall, we're trending, we're trending favorably here at fifty, call it fifty-one percent of the way through the year. Usually we are about late forties. Last year we were at fifty-two, but that's because we had a weird property tax timing thing. So that is an outlier. But being at fifty, a true fifty, we're ahead of the game right now in revenues. So let me talk a few minute, or a little bit to talk about some of the details. So property taxes, that's our most, our most significant revenue that we have as a district. We are at fifty-one point four percent of budget on property taxes. For the last two fiscal years through December, we've been about fifty-one and fifty-three depending on the year. And so based on what everything that I can see, property taxes are on track. Um, we, we're, it's also a little bit weird because we're still in tax year twenty twenty, and so we're, we're still getting our final tax year payments. And so what will be a better indicator is once those are done, then I can get an analysis of, all right, what, because we passed the levy for twenty twenty, we've now collected almost all those taxes, now let's see, take a look back and see, okay, what actually happened for the whole tax year? That will come basically as soon as the county tells me they're done, and so they're not, they told me they're done, and then I said, I think you got a little bit more money to give me, so we're gonna, we'll, we'll get that, um, shortly in the future. Uh, so for property taxes, I think are going really well, this, I, what I, last time I had to put a pretty complicated explanation about timing and it got delayed and the move payments, none of that stuff is happening anymore. We're kind of back on track in terms of timing, which is really important. Um, CPPRT is one that I do want to mention to you, so this one, um, we are way far ahead on receipts than we usually would be, um, we're at eighty-one percent and we've only received four payments out of the eight total. This is my fault. Um, but in this sense, it's more revenue, but it's more than I expected we would have, so last year we got one point two million in CPPRT, and just a reminder, that is a replacement tax that, a tax that was abolished many decades ago, um, it was a replacement tax that comes out of uh, companies', uh, state income tax. They get that money and then they, they send us a, a payment relative to a formula they figure out. We got one point two million last year, however, my understanding at that point and what I, what I believed what was happening is that, that one point two million was actually inflated because of economic incentives, there were a lot of economic incentives that were happening last fiscal year that we thought that was making up some of this difference. And so that the one point two was a bit of a bump and it's going to go down, so I budgeted for nine hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, as it turns out, um, we're going to get closer to one point three million, um, this year, so that's about a tune of about a four hundred thousand dollar swing on revenue. Uh, so that helps us, um, but still, that wasn't something that I anticipated. We're going to see yet if that's something that will continue for the future, but we'll be watching that pretty closely. Um, the rest of this, what I would say is we are back to a mostly return to normal in terms of timing, when I would expect to see payments in. Um, interest income is unknown, we are kind of on track, but who knows what happens in the next four months, right? Rates are going up a little bit, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. Food service is mostly back to normal, but it's a little bit under, one point three million is kind of normally where we hit in a normal year. We're trending closer to one point one, but I budgeted one point two, so that one looks like it's going to be a little bit less, but we'll see as the year progresses if that, if there's more, um, uh, more steam picked up with that program. The other thing that I would just notice in other local, that is kind of a group of other things, uh, E-rate, I don't know, I can't remember if I mentioned this before to the board, I know I've at least emailed a board member about it. We got E-rate, we got a lot more money in E-rate than I thought, uh, part of that was because last year we spent more money on internet connection, E-rate is a federal reimbursement for telecommunications, which includes internet connection. We spent a lot more last year when we were remote to boost up our internet. I didn't, I didn't realize at the time that that would mean we may, we may get a higher E-rate reimbursement the following year, which is what's happened. So, uh, that's really for that, otherwise state resources are, are pretty much on track. What I would say, there's a few more details there, but I would say those are pretty on track, and federal funding is running in general, uh, pretty well, um, there's a few things up, there's a few things down. Idea flow-through though is one thing that I would note, that that, that I think we're going to end up about two hundred thousand over budget, over what I expected we would get. We ended up getting a higher allocation of six hundred and forty-five thousand versus the initial estimate I had of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, which was based on the revenue we got last year, so we got more revenue this year in idea. So that was not once, not quite, excuse me, something that I was anticipating when we were adopting our budget.
Any particular reason for that? Just curious.
I don't have a better answer for you right now. I'd have to, I'd have to find out a better reason for what happened specifically there.
Just trying to get you data to plan.
Yep, yeah, yeah, for sure, and, and I mean, we were up and we were a little bit more accelerated in our budgeting process than we had been in the past, so some data isn't totally available when we do the budget as like in September, but, so we have to guess a little bit on that, but, but we should be able to guess a little bit closer on those particular things. The other thing is COVID, right, COVID nineteen relief, uh, we've not gotten any of the S R funds yet, but that's because we're still, we're still working on filing that grant, so once we do file that grant, we anticipate we'll get that, that funding really quick, which is something that will pay for, for example, those positions we talked about in P and P meeting. So overall, I, I think revenues are doing pretty good, there's some things that are definitely going to come in over what we did, a few things are probably going to end up a bit under, but I think the net is we're trending better than what I budgeted for revenue. Um, and not intentional, I try to budget what I think is going to happen, I don't try to budget for something less, so. On the expenditure side, um, salaries, which is our biggest line item, are doing really well, uh, particularly for administrator salaries, that's dead on. Um, teachers are dead on, which is very exciting, uh, to see, because teacher salaries is our biggest line item for the entire district, so that is trending exactly at thirty-seven point five percent, which is nine twenty-fourths payrolls that they're through, through December, that's exactly where we want to be, which is very exciting. This time last year, we were at thirty-seven point eight, which doesn't sound like a big difference, but if you extrapolate that for the year, that's like three hundred grand over budget, so like we watch that line very, very closely, so that's very exciting, the one thing is that ESP salaries are trending a bit under. We're at forty-four percent, which normally we'd want to see about forty-six, some of that is going to be open positions that aren't filled, but also some of that is we had a big increase in the budget, and so some of these are hourly folks and some of that kind of stuff, you have to estimate based on what's going to work out, so we'll watch that a little bit more closely, but I think ESPs are going to come in under, uh, budgets. Uh, just to move us along on benefits, I would skip the benefits and say in general, uh, a number of things are on track, a few things are higher than I thought, medical insurance is trending a bit higher, and that's our biggest benefit that we pay. Um, so I'm going to watch that, um, but we're a little bit higher than I would have thought on, on, on that, but medical insurance is notoriously somehow very difficult to budget because of people's elections, and based on their elections, what we pay for medical insurance for an individual can vary significantly, depending on if they go from family to single for some reason, or they go from single to family for a different reason, uh, that can vary, so that's somewhat hard to anticipate what's going to happen. But yeah, but so benefits, I think they're, they're doing okay, they're, some are trending a little bit higher, but I think there's still time that may end up fine. Uh, purchase services are running a little low, but that's really because our biggest contracts, which is food service and transportation, they have not returned to full, to full service. Um, or full force is what I wrote in my memo, food services, it's, it's not trending towards one point three million on expenditures, just like the revenue isn't. And then transportation even is not totally where it's at too, because they've been down drivers, so we pay less. Those kinds of things aren't kind of where to full force that I would have expected them to be when we budgeted. Um, supplies is, is within a typical range, um, that we usually see, uh, capital outlay is dead on. Uh, other objects, which is tuition, the biggest thing in there is tuition, and so we spend uh, millions on that line item, it's a very big one, that is trending a bit under. Um, Kelly and I were able to look at the data and essentially what's happening is, um, we estimate, we, we actually looked at specific kids and where they're going to go. And so we estimated about, in, in one particular line item, forty-eight kids would be placed at different places. There's not forty-eight placed right now, but some of them are, some of them moved out. Some of, we have some people move in, some kids are, uh, in transition, and so they will be added on as we thought they would, they just didn't get added on at the beginning of the year, they're going to get added on mid-year, um, and we do have some kids that are being affected by availability of programs, and that is a, a real thing, so. Um, we will catch up a bit on trend on this, but we will come in under budget, my honest best guess right now is probably five hundred thousand dollars under budget on a light item that's five million dollars, so. And that's mostly because of a few students didn't place how we thought, but also we do have some instances where, uh, the programs are full and they're trying to find the right solution for the students, does that make sense?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, non-cap equipment, yeah, I'm not, I'm going to skip that, so overall, that's, that's where I would say, so on a big picture, salaries, our biggest expenditure, it's doing great, benefits a little bit high, everything else is either within normal range or slightly under, uh, based on that, so. So on an overall perspective, I think revenues are coming in a little bit more, expenditures are coming in a little bit less, is my net gut right now, which would be ideal to happen, we don't, we don't intend for that to happen, I don't, I don't budget, you know, I don't budget for more and then expect less to come, and I try to budget for what I think is going to actually happen. Um, but, so that's what I would say in terms of, hey, Dan, what's going on this year, this is how the year is shaping out to be.
Okay.
Good.
That is good.
Better than the reverse.
Right, exactly. No, we appreciate it, there don't seem to be any areas of concern, does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Dan, I know that's a lot of information in one late meeting, um, but it's important stuff, so I appreciate you taking the time with that. Um, moving on, hearing no other questions, moving on to the energy audit, Vernon Hills Energy Commission.
Yeah, so we've been having conversations with the Vernon Hills Energy Commission, um, about doing an energy audit. Uh, we're essentially a company at no cost to the district will come in and do an analysis of our energy usage and things that, ideas that they have that we could do to improve our energy usage. We are, we've, we've, we've talked, we met Don as part of that, and that we've been participating in the meetings, and we feel comfortable moving forward with an, with an audit, there's no cost to the district, so there's nothing really to approve, there's just a, a letter that I would sign saying, yep, we're going to do this, and we agree that it doesn't cost us anything. Um, and then they'll give us this information, and so based on that information, we can decide what we want to do with it, maybe that is um, data that we use for a future project, or it's nothing, um, the, the, there's many options available to us, so we're kind of letting you know we're moving forward with that.
So this is the Vernon Township.
Yes.
Energy Commission.
Vernon.
It's Vernon Township.
My bad.
But not, not bad.
No, I wrote that line in haste, it is the Vernon Township, you're right, I kind of thought the, the words looked weird, but I couldn't, I didn't, I'm like, Energy Commission, that, that's what it's called.
No worries.
Sorry, Vernon Township Energy Commission.
They've asked for data like square footage, energy usage over the last few years, and, uh, they'll crunch a bunch of numbers and then they look at, because it's a commission, uh, they're looking at how they can purchase across the commission. So if we said, you know, really interested in putting some charging stations on campus, they would say, oh, well, the city wants to do that, and so does the village, and so does the park district, and so they kind of lump that together and it's, their feeling is that it's more likely that they will be able to get, uh, grant money if it's an intergovernmental agreement, first of all, and big projects tend to go. We do have some issues because, uh, our need isn't as great as some districts, uh, and they base that largely on free and reduced lunch data. And so some things we would be ineligible for, we, we, um, but uh, it's, the nice thing is, is that they've hired the, the village, or excuse me, township has hired Max, whose job it is to help coordinate things, so that takes some of the weight off of us. Um, and they also, um, Veragee, the group that we've been talking to, has onboard, um, grant writers. So we would benefit greatly from not having to write our own grants, um, so. We'll see what they say, I'm interested to move forward in a time where it seems like we're standing still.
Appreciate you taking the time to attend those meetings and get the detail.
They're fun, you know, they're all nerds.
Well, I can't think of a better energy and sustainability nerd on our board to participate, so thank you. Any questions? Alright, moving on to bids and contracts, we'll look for the future updates on that, by the way, um, bids and contracts. Got anything to tell us?
Hi, thank you, um. We went out to bid for our roofing, our EFS and our masonry, and, um, we had some, uh, numbers come back, they're, uh, inflated from what our estimates were, so I'll go through, um, each pro, each project, um, and talk about it. Starting with the, um, Vernon Hills, uh, roof replacement. We were estimating, um, six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for the project for the year. We had a lot of scope increase, we had added windows, um, as part of the project. There's some sheet metal, um, about seventeen thousand dollars worth of work, um, the EFS work on the tower, we took the work, uh, around the base and gave that to a roofer so we can tie in the roofs in the future, have them build the bottom uh, section up and do that cutout, um, so there's a little added expense using the roofers, but we know when we go to tie back in that it's done in fresh properly, that we can take it up, put it back together, um, for a future roofing. Um, and then we also added, you know, it was only thirteen thousand, five hundred, but it, some, um, camera stands mounted to the building and mounted properly for, uh, our, uh, cameras for our parking lots, uh, and out on the property. Last year, roofing was running about thirty-one to thirty-two dollars a square foot. And with all the bids had been opening, uh, the price increases, right now, um, uh, our consultants opening roofing and doing all the projects, so it's coming in around forty to forty-one dollars a square foot. So in one year's time, it's already a ten dollar increase, and that's all the materials, because
It's all supply chain.
The labor, labors are the contracts, I think, good for another four or five years, so you, you have built in their, their automatic increases. But it's the skyrocketing prices of materials, um, especially insulation is, is one of the, one of the main factors, um, which we saw when we did the field house, uh, the one of the big problems was getting the insulation for the roof, we, the rubber membrane wasn't a problem, but because they had factory, one factory that was flooded and down in Texas and that, and factory shutdowns that just caused a price escalation, so. So our, our bid, we had three bids, um, our lowest bid came in at eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars uh, over our original estimated cost, which is, uh,
Not, not eight hundred thousand over.
No, no, I'm sorry, it was, came in at eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. It was, our original estimate was six forty-six, so we were, you know, it was two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars higher. So we had those other scope creeps involved, um, in the project, so if we figure the scope creeps, uh, and take those out of the equation, it's, we're about, uh, ninety-six thousand dollars higher than what our original estimate would be just for roofing alone, uh, as part of the project, so. We had added, uh, we had also done an alternate on this, on it, um, and we, because of, uh, the increased pricing, uh, we're not going to look to, uh, ask you to approve the alternate, we'll save that for a future project.
What was the alternate going to involve?
Uh, the ultimate was to do additional roofing, another, another roof area. Since we were there at the base of the, um, at the library, it was just another small section of roof, another section of roof, uh, but it's an additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So as we do, all our projects come together, you know, at this point, we, we don't feel it's, uh, that's why we bid it as an alternate, so we, we knew, um, that we could drop it out if we were, if, if prices came in high, as we knew that we were going to be price increases.
And if we were to approve it at the next, uh, board meeting, um, what's the timeframe that you're looking at? When would the project start and be completed?
Oh, the project will start when school, uh, when school is out, let out, and then will be, will be completed in August for school starts.
So it's a summer project?
So that, that was our roofing, um. Our next, uh, any questions about the roofing?
Is there any possibility that we're losing out even, first of all, is this alternate have to happen, it's not a safety or, or is it maintenance, so the alternate project is not something that needs to happen?
No.
Then my next. Then my next question would be.
Our next bid was for the EFS work on the Fly Tower Auditorium. So we went out to bid, we had three contractors come to the pre-bid meeting and we received two bids. Our lowest bid was $296,900. And we were, our original estimate was 252,000. So price increase of $44,900 on this project. And related back to, you know, we're doing our estimating and and stuff earlier in the year, you know, in in late in the year, and their price increases that came across the board. We feel that that increases is not so substantial that it would warrant to us to wait on doing the project. I don't foresee, that's in the future, we don't see, we don't know what's going to happen with prices of all these materials, the way they've been escalating. When is it ever going to level out? So we asking you to, you know, approve that EFS project for 296,900. And then our last bid was for the masonry work and the steel lintel replacement at Vernon Hills High School over our three entrances. And we also have an alternate add for some masonry work at Libertyville High School. We have some leaks in some areas that were never addressed in the past, so there's penetrations in the wall. We need proper flashing to be done over in those areas.
How old are those areas if you had to guess? How old are those areas if you had to guess?
How old are the
The areas that we're touching.
Libertyville. Oh, the area at Libertyville? Oh. Think that section of building, it might be built in the sixties. I have to, I have to look. I don't have it in front of me, but
Do you, do you mind?
But it's around basically where UNIVENTS were were put in and stuff, so we've got some leaks and some, some flashing that needs to be done properly.
Okay, great.
It's a, it's a relatively small project. So we actually had six contractors come out and look at the work. We received three bids. Our project estimate was for $335,000 for both schools. Vernon Hills came in at 199,500. And our alternate for Libertyville came in at 29,500. Total cost for both projects would be 229,000. And we are 160, $106,000 under our estimate for that project.
Mark, I see in the, the other companies that bid were wildly different than particularly for Libertyville's ad.
Yeah. Burgland has done work with us before in the past.
Okay.
And we feel their, their pricing was, is, it was was right where we needed to be when and they understood the scope.
Right, that's, that's what I'm getting.
They're hungry for the work.
I just want to make sure, like, and I know you do this, but I want to reiterate for the public that you work with all of our vendors on understanding the scope of the work when they come in so different price-wise. That that's part of your process.
And the other thing, especially with alternates, depending on that company and how much other work they have lined up. They may just throw a higher number there because it's not really that worth it for them.
Not something they really
Yeah, so you have that at play as well.
Okay.
The other thing is if they've already worked here and then done some work in on the buildings, they know the building, they know what the risks are more than somebody that hasn't done this kind of work.
One of the big variables in this was the east entrance at Vernon Hills High School was the shoring and how they, their shoring company, how they were going to shore the roof. So if they brought in their experts, and if one said you got to do it this way, it was more expensive than the other, and that could have been another contributing factor in in the difference in some of the pricing.
Thank you.
So for, for all three projects. It told us about, over our estimate with including consulting costs. We're about $171,000 over our original, original budget number. We feel these are three important projects and we want to get them all completed and we'll, we'll still be able to be in budget. We still have the, we're still working on the going out to bid for the Libertyville, the fax rooms. So that's on you know, upcoming bids coming up, so.
Okay.
That's the big one.
That's a big one, for sure.
And when will that bid happen?
When, when will the bid happen for that?
Oh, for this, we are pre-bid meeting for the fax rooms. It's also the abatement for those projects. We have a pre-bid meeting next Monday for, for both, both projects. And we will be bringing them to next month's FNF and then to the board meeting next month for, for approval.
Thank you. I know I jumped ahead a little bit, so.
I have a, have a process question, but I think maybe a month ago, we had talked about how do you prioritize the capital projects and such, so I don't know where that is, this if we, if we approve this, then are we inadvertently not approving something else? And that's the part that is a disconnect for me. So when do you think we'd be able to look at the full list?
So we did share the full list. That list has not changed, and even with this, that full, that list is not changing. But really, the process we were talking about is is really moving forward from this summer, how a process would look different. So this, this list that we shared, whenever that was, is the same list that we're, we've been operating from, that we're getting bids on, all that kind of stuff. More updating is kind of the prices. And so once, really, once we get the big one, which is the fax room, we'll update that list and show all the costs there so that we understand what those implications are going forward. So the one, but even on that list, there were some things to say, well, depending on what happens, based on the allocation that we typically do, there would not be enough funding to do this, various projects on that list. So we'll revisit that once we get this big data point, which is the fax room next month.
So as we move forward, I'm sorry, I mean, I was with Sinal also, and I do remember sharing the list, right? But it, I'm assuming now that the document database that we are hiding, we can always be referencing as we're talking about these projects. I mean, that's
Yes.
In isolation, it makes sense, but when you look at it universally, I'd like to see how it lines up with the other projects. Yeah, that'll be very helpful. And I'd like, you know, if it's something that we're talking about, just for myself, instead of having to go back, I'd like to have that at, you know, what, what it looks like from the whole the whole perspective each time we talk about something.
When a, a big recommendation is presented to us so that we can put it in context.
Right. Am I alone in that?
No, like a big picture, bird's eye view of all the upcoming things and how these current projects fit in.
Yep.
I think, no, you're not alone. I'd like that too.
With our new software, that'll make it easy to include documents.
Yeah.
I I just didn't process it, that's all. I'm just thirty seconds behind.
I might not have said it, but that's what I meant. That's what you meant to say. I think we left off at LHS yearbook agreement.
So the yearbook for LHS is, that contract is up for renewal. They worked with Harris Jones. They would like to continue to work with Harris Jones, so this is really a five-year agreement with a flat cost for them. This is funded by and large through the students themselves. So this really will help kind of keep a consistent cost for the next five years. This is probably not likely the final, final agreement, but it's really, really close. I'm just going to tweak a few language items between now and our final adoption, but the substantive dollar amounts won't really change.
Okay. Moving on to the district office lease agreement.
Yeah, so that one, I, I have the final, we have the final lease ready to go. So to give you perspective, we've been on a ten-year lease with our current district office. That lease is ending calendar year 2022. So that's December. So we have been work, I've been working with our, our tenant agent for gosh, I don't know, six months, trying to negotiate a new ten-year deal essentially. And so I have that final, final document. I did not include in the packet just because of it's kind of some sensitive information in there, but that'll be available for, we'll share with you, and it'll be available for public, for view, for the, for the adoption in February. But essentially, the terms of that agreement are, is exactly what I said last time when we had a meeting about it, and we discussed the terms. Just as a reminder. Right now, we end up paying about 190,000 a year for the district office. In future years, it starts at like 200-ish, and then it'll go up a couple thousand a year after that. So this is a very reasonable increase. In addition, the first year of the contract, they are going to give us nine months free rent. That was part of what the tenant agent helps negotiate. In addition to that, they are going to replace the carpet, lighting, ceiling and paint. I think paint, yeah, ceiling tile, and I think paint in the front suite. So that's where most of the offices are. The back suite where is like conference rooms, A, B, C, D, R. That all has new carpet and new lighting. This will make the front that, and so the owner is paying for that out of their pockets.
Okay.
Great.
And we are looking at expanding our current kitchen in, to make it a little bit bigger for that. And they're, they're gonna, they're gonna eat that cost as well. And I don't know if Kelly is still on, on or watching exploring the idea of having some car chargers on site, exploring, I said exploring. So we're going to try to see if we can do something there as well.
Libertyville has a company that
This would be a ten-year agree, so just for numbers, it's a ten-year agreement. The total cost, estimated cost for the overall 10 years would be about 2.2 million. And we're very comfortable with that.
Way cheaper than building an administration building.
Yes. Well, it depends on how big it is, but yeah.
Yes.
You could build a really small building for 2.2 million.
That's a big space, and we utilize it.
Yes, 16,000 square feet. We use it a lot.
Yeah.
And that'll be up for approval on February 28th at the regular board meeting. Liberty Mill Plaza lease agreement.
So that is the lease agreement. We also, as of Friday, have the final lease document for that. That is our transition program that we have been talking about. We're still, you know, in process for getting the village approval, but I think that that'll work out, and this will be the lease for that, or this, so that is also a 10-year lease. Those prices are the same as what I shared in December, so there was not much room retail because of the location. Retail is more expensive than office, like office kind of stuff. And there's a very intentionality with the location of that space to be of, of use educationally for that program. So that is a 6,000 square foot, square foot space, and that will cost us about $120,000 a year, and then go up a, not even a couple thousand a year, a little bit each year after that. So for that, for that space for 10 years, we're looking at about 1.3 million over the life of that lease. So the Lynn Hines actually himself was helping negotiate the terms, some of the language pieces in that lease. And so that, that'll be available. One thing I should have mentioned, the district office lease, it actually comes as an amendment to our original lease. So that it'll look a little bit different. This is a new lease, so this has kind of fresh documentation in it.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing that one at the regular board meeting. Any questions?
No.
Okay, upcoming bids and contracts.
So we're talking about fax. That's coming next month. That's our family consumer science labs at LHS. The, the one that's upcoming is photography services. So right now, we use VIP throughout the district for four different areas, athletics at each building and yearbook at each building. All of them love working with VIP, but we have four contracts with VIP. I would like to have one. And so we're going to work on consolidating that. That won't be next month, but that, that's going to be coming within the next couple of months.
Look forward to seeing that. Doesn't look like we have disposal of any obsolete equipment.
So one more upcoming.
Yeah, sorry.
Food service RFP. So I have, since I've been here, I've heard several people talk about their interest in getting a better food than what they've have. And we've been working with the current provider to try to do that. And we feel that right now would be the appropriate time to look at what else is out there. Or maybe stick with what we currently have, but we feel, we feel that we have the time and capacity to look at this. To look at the service. So we'll put together a process for proposals. There's some cool ideas maybe we could do. So we would like to, we would like to look at that process and really kind of as long as y'all are okay with that, we're going to move forward with that. It could be, you change nothing, but it could be, you change everything. So, but we, we would like to look at that.
Absolutely. Renewals the time to do that, so perfect. All right. I think we already covered obsolete equipment, none. Future agenda items. We will have long-term financial projections at the March Facilities and Finance Committee meeting. Any other future agenda items? No. Okay. Then that adjourns the facilities and finance. Do that. Just want to do it.
Do it.
Go for it. Oh, I can be better than that.
Just to be clear, that was about an hour meeting. I just
All right.